Great, that sounds like a queue. Got 9:30, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Attendance seating is full. Could I get a motion to adopt the agenda? Any issues?
Yeah, no.
And is making that motion apparently?
Yes, I am because I'm not right next door to Mike, so I can't argue, so I have to yell. Are you ready that the April 9, 2024 agenda be adopted or presented?
I have called for the vote. Great, thank you. Appointment, so I think everyone is here just to talk the land use bylaw, is that?
No.
Is that right? Anyone? Okay. Minutes, can I get a motion to adopt those? Sheena, you wanna do that?
We don't have it in front of me right now.
So, okay.
I can do it.
Yeah, you can let Mike do it if you.
Yeah, go for it, Mike.
The standing committee of the whole meeting minutes of February 13, 2024 be adopted as presented.
Call for the vote. Harry. All right. Oh, sorry Kathy, I'm too quick.
Excuse me, I'm new to this virtual, you're going so fast, but yes, I'm in favor.
Sorry. Thank you. I assume you're in favor. Awesome, thank you. Um, land use bylaw update. Adrian, is that you or Mr. Fletcher?
It is, yeah. I'll share my screen here. Oh, wait, Sean's good. Oh, perfect, okay, thank you, good morning, Council and Mayor. I'm Adrian Slid, Director of Planning and Development. Today I have with me Chelsea Thompson, Development Officer 2, and Barb Dupuy, Planner with the Planning and Development Department. We're here today to talk about the land use bylaw, which I'm sure everybody is aware is under the aegis of council as far as approvals, so I'll now hand it off to Chelsea.
Thanks Adrian, so we appreciate the opportunity to update you today on the land use bylaw update project. The land use bylaw is a document that is adopted by city council and manages development within the city. The current land use bylaw was approved back in 2005 and could benefit from an update. The main goals of the project included aligning the land use bylaw with Flourish, our city's municipal development plan. The project team has worked towards writing regulations that facilitate our goals for housing diversity, sustainable growth, mixed-use developments, and the preservation of natural features. Another goal was to update and modernize the document, as mentioned, it was from 2005, so with the proposed amendments, we've added some new districts, consolidated lesser-used districts, and introduced several new uses. We're trying to simplify and streamline wherever possible with the document. And the last goal of the land use bylaw update project was to work towards a more user-friendly document, so our deliverables will be the availability of one single PDF land use bylaw document that can be posted on the website. And that PDF document, or that land use bylaw document, can also be converted into an interactive land use bylaw online with Phase 5 of the project. So, some highlights is that since our last presentation to SCOW, which was in July of 2023, several key project items have been completed. This includes that we finished the section-by-section review, we literally went through page 1 through page 300 and something, 400 and something, let's say. We finished the parking section, which now proposes reductions to both residential and non-residential parking requirements. We finished the downtown district. We have finished two mixed-use districts in their review, which is the mixed-use 1 and the mixed-use 2. The first draft of the land use bylaw was released to the public on October 31, 2023 for comments. We did public consultation following that, we did an in-person open house, a virtual open house, and an online survey, and that was held in November of 2023. Feedback from those activities were collected from interested parties. Staff has reviewed that feedback, and in some cases incorporated that feedback into the draft land use bylaw document that we have. We are also currently going through the process of legal review of the draft document, and preliminary meetings with the subconsultants, high-tech apps, has those meetings have started as it relates to that interactive online component of the document. I would, sorry, just to note that the highlight items from today are in addition to those that were previously provided to you at the last SCOW meeting. So we did attach the July 2023 agenda report to the current agenda report, so you can refer to that if you want more information. So for project phases, we are at the tail end of Phase 3 with our foot in Phase 4. Phase 3 is the community consultation, and as mentioned, we started Phase 4 work, and that's mostly related to document refinement. As we finalize Phase 3, we are going to be undertaking a second circulation of the revised draft document. That's going to be done through both the Cultivate the Conversation webpage, as well as through emails for both internal staff and our external stakeholder looking for comments. Then Phase 4 will consider, consist of a final draft document, a final legal review, a final proofreading, all before we come before council again. So, public consultation and feedback, we can dig into that a little bit. So we received feedback from several interested parties during our open house and from the online survey. Two of our external stakeholders include Urban Development Institute, or UDI, as well as the Canadian Home Builders Association, which is CHBA. Both parties sent us letters with UDI, also including a spreadsheet of feedback with change requests. A number of those change requests have either been partially or fully incorporated into the most recent draft document that we have. Additional detail can also be found on those proposed changes in your current agenda report. There was also public feedback that was the project team received, and we collected that through our online survey. So, a what we learned report was produced, and that kind of details the comments that we received. Some of this feedback from the public was also partially or fully incorporated into the most recent draft as well. So, the upcoming slides are going to speak a little bit more to a couple of high-level topics of interest that we thought we'd bring up. So first, for me is parking. So, as mentioned, we did go through, we finished the section-by-section review, that included the parking section, and we have made some modifications to the parking requirements. So one is that we've added a diagram for how we are going to measure parking stalls, how we're going to measure drive aisles, just as a point of clarity. We've also added a table of minimum dimension requirements. For residential parking, administration is proposing some reductions, pardon me, for apartments, townhouse complexes, as well as secondary suites. For non-residential parking, administration has also proposed reductions based on the built form or the district where they're located. As it relates to downtown, administration has proposed ratio reductions and also provided additional parking reduction opportunities to encourage a more park-and-walk type environment for downtown specifically. The project team is also open to looking at parking reductions for non-market rental apartments that are targeted towards more low-to-moderate income households within the city. And with that, I will hand the remainder of the slide presentation off to Barb Dupuy.
Thank you, Chelsea. I'll start with detached garages. So, administration is proposing to keep the minimum garage size requirements that are currently in place within our bylaw. This regulation requires that a two-stall garage have a minimum clear interior dimension of 5.8 meters, which is about 19 feet. To try and accommodate a two-stall garage product on a narrower lot, we have written in a regulation that would allow a garage to have a lesser sideyard building setback and be closer to the property line. Previously, a garage had to be 1 meter away from the side property line, and we're now proposing it to be about 0.6 meters, which is about 20 feet away from the side property line. This would only apply to smaller rear-drive lots in the LLR and FBR districts with a single detached house. It would allow a single detached home on an 8-meter-wide lot to have a garage that will meet that minimum 5.8-meter clear interior dimension. So, we talked about the downtown district at the past committee session, and we've made some tweaks since then. Administration is proposing to transition the existing boardwalk district, which is just north of the river, into a downtown transition area, as shown in this gray on the slide. The project team did not propose any other transition areas at this time, as additional technical studies would be needed to understand development potential in other areas adjacent to downtown. The design criteria for buildings within the downtown was amended to encourage development. We increased some of the building heights. We adjusted the uses within the downtown. Currently, uses are considered based on their location within the building and the character area of downtown that they're in. We have proposed to remove those requirements in the new draft. This means that non-active uses may be located at grade. The intent was to allow more flexibility and to encourage business downtown. So, one of the residential changes the draft proposes is the exclusion of the front-drive zero-lot line products from the SLR district. So, the zero-lot line product was introduced in 2020 and has started to build out in our newer neighborhoods, including Charro, Erinridge North, and Northridge Phase 2. At the time the product was introduced, we had something called a lot with distribution within the land use bylaw that specified only a certain percentage of each neighborhood could be built out with smaller lots. That regulation was repealed, and so an unlimited number of small lots may be provided at this time. One of the concerns that planning still wants a mix of housing product. So, our Flourish MDP, Section 7.1 Housing Diversity, speaks to the desire to have a diverse house stock that is suitable for residents regardless of family status, income, or life stage. In some cases, what we're seeing is that the zero-lot line product is becoming the dominant housing type, and we want to find a way to still encourage a mix of products. So, administration is recommending that the zero-lot line product only occur as a lane product. The lane product is preferred as it provides an uninterrupted boulevard with room for street parking, street trees, and other necessary infrastructure. As part of the land used update project, it was identified that several parcels within the city would benefit from some spot redistricting. So, staff sent out five different groups of letters as part of this project. For each proposed redistricting, there were public notification letters mailed out to within 100 meters of the parent parcels. Public feedback from these spot redistrictings was collected, and it's going to be attached with your council first reading report. On the slide is sort of an overview map of where each group was located within the city, and then I'm going to switch over to some detail maps and provide a quick explanation for each of these sites. So, site number 1 is 1 Giroux Road. This site is the home of a convenience store and a gas station. It's currently districted as the C1 district, however, due to being directly adjacent to St. Albert Trail, the team is recommending that this be redistricted to the Trail Corridor Commercial District to be congruent with the other neighboring parcels in the area. Number 2 is 10 Carlton Drive, 55 Shavani Street, 370 Carlton Drive, and 380 Carlton Drive. These parcels house several businesses. The site is currently the Business Park Transition, or BPT district. As this district is being retired, administration is recommending that these parcels be redistricted to BP2, and that would be congruent with other neighboring parcels within that vicinity. Number 3, that is 314 St. Albert Trail, 57 St. Thomas Street, and 59 St. Thomas Street. This is the home of an oil change business. The parcel is currently districted as the Mixed Commercial District. As this district is being retired, administration is proposing that these parcels be redistricted to the Trail Corridor Commercial District, as they only have access from St. Albert Trail. And then moving on to number 4, this is 54203 Range Road 261. So, this is the home of a religious assembly that we recently annexed from the county. When this parcel was in Sturgeon County, it was districted an institutional district. So, administration is proposing to redistrict the property from the Transition District, the PSI District, to accommodate the existing church and its accessory functions. And then the last one is number 5. This is Unit 110, 23B Akins Drive. This is one unit of Apple Yard Square. Currently, this unit is districted as Direct Control, which was a recent change during COVID. However, the remainder of the parcel is C1. So, we're proposing to redistrict this unit to the new Neighborhood Commercial District. Because the Neighborhood Commercial District has had drinking establishment added to the use list, it would again be congruent with the rest of Apple Yard Square, and it would accommodate the existing use. So, at our last committee presentation, we mentioned the possibility of including a mixed-use transit-oriented development district. This was to accommodate St. Albert Trail as the future home of the LRT line. When administration started to dig in and discuss this portion of the project, we realized how large of a scope that one single district would be. So, administration has determined the potential mixed-use TOD district discussion would better occur as part of the city infill strategy. This is expected to begin subsequent to the land use bylaw update and completion of the St. Albert West Area Structure Plan. Therefore, we've removed the mixed-use TOD district from the proposed land use bylaw draft. With that said, the draft love still provides two other mixed-use district opportunities, which is ME1 and ME2, for any interim mixed-use development proposals. So, in terms of interested party engagement, we still have a couple of upcoming public events that the public can participate in. We're planning a joint public information session with the West Area Structure Plan Project. It will be drop-in style, and staff from both projects will be on hand to answer questions. That's occurring on April 25, 2024, in Progress Hall. We're also planning a three-week circulation of the newest version of the draft love to interested parties. This will be a chance to provide feedback on the draft document prior to the public hearing. We're going to advertise this circulation on our Cultivate the Conversation page and through our social media. And then we will have the bylaw process with public hearing, the public can either write in or speak to the bylaw at the hearing. So, our remaining project milestones and estimated timeline are shown on the slide. Our next step is to incorporate any feedback we received today into the draft land use bylaw. We would then be a part of the in-person public information session. We would then do the three-week circulation to any interested parties, and we've allocated some time for some minor text amendments during May. After, we would do the final round of proofreading and legal review to create a final draft of that document. We estimate a first reading could be held sometime in October. After the council process, we would be working on some of our post-adoption items, including staff training, to create our interactive, user-friendly online bylaw that would be done in partnership with high-tech apps. And after an update like this, administration is going to develop key performance indicators and monitor the implementation to see the impact of how these new regulations are having on the form of our neighborhoods. And so, overall, we're asking that our agenda report be received as information. We thank you for your time today, and the project team is available to answer any questions that you may have.
You guys want a quick introduction of who's in the room, and I believe you guys are here to answer questions if needed? Start at the back.
What did you answer with the added ones?
Dave Armstrong and Pacer Holmes. Lynn Devon was selected here. Sheena, let me begin, start.
Oh, Jill, start. Yes, thank you, and I have only one question. There's a landmark site marked downtown, and in the proposal it mentioned entrances for downtown would be designated landmark site. So why was the one directly across the street from St. Albert, unless shaded wrong, St. Albert Place, a landmark site?
And the height was that height back down, or has it changed at all?
No, I don't believe it changed it from the dark.
Council of Bromansky, those were, those were established in DARF as the potential height ranges. And the landmark, I think, was just to identify areas that there was prominence and visibility. So the corner of St. Albert Trail, corner of Brandon, as you come into downtown, and then across from St. Albert Place.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
And then, yes.
Yeah, I guess maybe imagine a few other people have this comment or question. The exclusion of front-drive zero-lot lines, I'm, can you go over the rationale again in relation to it? I know you said it relates to the MDP, you would like to see a little bit more diversity. But yet, you know, right now, when I look at the new neighborhoods that are implementing that, I see that diversity in the types of housing in relation to how they have it in relation to where you have a lane, front lane, opposite of a product that has access off of a back lane. So that gives you that kind of diversity. Can you explain a little bit more in relation to where administration was not believing it follows with the MDP, or?
Yeah, there's something behind it. Yeah, so I guess I'll, I'll start. There's a number of, number of reasons, and I think we actually identified them, some, identified some of those in the past, so. Going back to the initial approval, I think there was a rationale that there was affordability with these units. The average listing price right now is 530, somewhere in that range. So it's not by our definition affordable, it's not close to affordable. It's maybe less than other new products, because they're saving on that front footage. But it's not by our definition affordable, so that's one. I guess, from our perspective, when we look at it, low-density residential product is low-density residential product. So if you have a zero, or if you have a standard single-family, those are the same thing. You're just saving because you're, again, narrowing up that front, frontage. So it's not diversity from our perspective. We want to see medium density, high density, low density, all in the same neighborhood, not trying to meet as close to capital region growth density targets with zeros, and then throwing in a couple of medium or higher-density sites as a kind of afterthought. So that's, that's one of the reasons. When we look at the street frontage, I think this is something that we've spoken about quite a bit, we do have concerns about the ability to locate street furniture, that's still something that resonates with public ops and with engineering at this time, based on what we've experienced so far. We have concerns about the ability to actually provide parking. So we provide a width for the street, but then with the driveway cuts, you, your parking is fairly limited for on-street parking, so again, you're spending a lot of money on pavement that you're not getting a return for. There's still the opportunity in the land use bylaw to have a lane access zero. If, if developers and builders want to pursue that, then that's their option, as we recommended. And then again, like the savings, just to go back to that. So, front foot is 4,000 to 5,000 feet right now?
Dave has an actual presentation that breaks down the savings based on real build-outs that these things seem to be and the surrounding areas, so he can speak to exact prices, and it's pretty clear to understand. I mean, there's illustrations of the frontages of the homes, the square footage, and the price point of real homes, if you're interested in seeing that.
Yeah, I just don't know in relation, sorry.
Yeah, I just carry on that point.
Yeah, we'll get, I'll come back to you, Courtney.
So, front footage, say you're saving 4,000 to 5,000 per foot. Yeah, 5,000 per foot, so you're saving 15, 16, 20,000 per lot that's to be passed down to the, to the buyer. That's great for the buyer. Our, our public ops unit is not planting street trees of the same species caliber, etc. So, at the end of the day, what we're planting will be a mature tree with a value of $20,000 instead of a mature tree of $60,000. So, city is losing $30,000, $40,000 just in the value of each tree per lot as we do this. So I guess there's, I think there's a significant number of reasons why we have caution about this. And then, the other part of this is the human component about this, and I've talked to, I don't know, 10 different communities in the region, done a lot of history about zeros. Zeros were utilized in Calgary, Edmonton, a couple of regional communities in the 80s, and they went away, and they went away for a reason. There was a substantial amount of negative human interactions with those products. A lot of misunderstanding about where your property is, how you can utilize your property, a lot of non-compliance, a lot of air conditioner units, etc., being built into neighboring property or extending into neighboring property, sidesteps being built into neighboring property. So there's a significant human component, I talked to somebody at Edmonton, and they said as soon as we started to see zeros, 311 calls started coming in about, you know, like, what's this, what's this happening, what's this happening? And you're going to get some of that just as a new product. But it's also reality. I think a lot of the regional communities that I've talked to are tepid at best about this product and cooling, and I think it's for a lot of the reasons that I've mentioned. And so, our recommendation at this time is, if you want to have zeros, if we think it's a great product and it gives opportunities to narrow up a lot and to reduce the overall cost of a unit, then it makes more sense on a lane where you kind of offset some of those potential impacts. You're not going to offset all of them, but you can at least offset some.
I probably have some comments, but I'm going to maybe wait for a presentation back from it, and then I don't know how you want to do that, Madam Chair, in relation to when are you going to get the feedback from the present, other presentations, I don't know, how are you going to run that?
So, do we, do we want to see the presentation about the savings for, is that what?
Well, I just don't know what, from a format perspective, or a kind of
Graphic the slide.
Yeah, 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 sorry, Mr. Armton, I just don't know, I just don't, I'm just trying to find just a way of how to run the meeting.
Is that, is that something that people want to see?
Sure.
Well, I'd like to see it, the question is, do we go through questions first and then go to the gallery, which is how it should work?
Yeah.
But
Committee, we can do what we like.
This is true. Do whichever you want, you're the chair.
So, how about, are you, are you able to maybe email that to?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
We tried to reach our materials, we didn't know what the questions would be like.
Yeah, so let's, let's just get that queued, ready to go, we can keep going with questions. And we also get anyone who's going to be talking, just to come sit up at the table, the folks online, my apologies, would, would love to hear what you have to say. So, if we can move you to the table, that would be awesome.
And for the I don't know, I'm going to get it out first.
Okay, so we've got some more questions queued up, we're going to go Council Broadhead and then Mayor Heron.
All right. I will get to the zero-lot line, I imagine that's going to be the controversial moment this morning.
Well, it's not always, so let me take you down some less controversial stuff.
So, non-residential parking, so you've reduced it by 10% from 50 to 40, what's a practical implication of that? I mean, or for Costco, I can see it be a practical implication, but for a, for a, you know, single stall, like, would that reduce a stall? Like, is that enough to do that? Like, I mean, what's, what's the practical implication of 5 square meters on a building to reduce a stall or not? Is there a minimum?
So, Council Broadhead, with the, because we apply the ratios based on the square footage, it might be marginal, we have a, an example, a parking reduction example, it's slide 21. So, a 1,000-square-foot unit, or sorry, 1,000-square-meter general retail store in the Trail Corridor, existing at 1 per 45 square meters, you'd be looking at 23 total required stalls. And then as you, with the proposed reduction to 50, you'd be looking at a reduction of 3. But for the most part, you're finding multi-tenant, like, we're getting, so that 3, reduction of 3 would be applied to multiple units, so on a site as a whole, you're going to see a larger reduction than just a 3. But again, you know, everything we've kind of done with a measured approach, because we want to make sure that it's still functional at this time.
And just, I needed to understand the scope of that particular change. And just, I needed to understand the scope of that particular change. So, downtown. So, project team did not propose any other transitional areas. We had a presentation and a request from, from a business to actually go across the trail. Any thoughts on that? Like, I mean, my objection is I don't think businesses should be in R1 districts. But to the proponents' perspective, wasn't that far away from downtown? So, what's your thoughts on, is the trail a barrier for future business designation or not?
Yeah, so I guess the way that we view it, the trail is kind of a natural break. We have looked at the potential for expanding on, on this side of the trail. But it requires further study. One of the complications with the DARF as it was, is there weren't complete technical studies that verified whether even the development proposed was possible or possible. So we want to look at that probably as part of the infill strategy, whether you can even maybe to that boardwalk district, which is just across the river, that fronting district, whether you could have similar or the same regulation there. And then we know that there's a landowner on the south side of the downtown that's also expressed interest, but we didn't feel that it was something that we could do at this time. Downtown is on the west side of the trail. But we didn't feel that it was something that we could do at this time. Downtown is on this, on the west side of the trail.
Then uh, your next question around that is, so you've got us across. Uh, the, the river I, on the north side, uh. But you stopped. At the white little church there? Is that where this area is stopped? Reason why I ask is that we took down the Navi building and this school is. Destined to go as well. Uh, is this an opportunity to extend that to those lots? Well?
I was just going to say, uh, Council Broadhead. So the downtown transition area is a renaming of the Board Rock District. Uh, so that there was already kind of mixed-use developments there. Um, we didn't look to expand it. We just looked to. Um, beef it up, um, simplify it a little bit, um, introduce a couple of new uses in there that I know we've had some, some interest in, uh, specifically. Create that kind of buffer district between the residential of Mission. Uh, to this transition area and then into the actual downtown because we have increased uh, building heights in downtown. Uh, and opportunities downtown as well. Uh, as Adrian uh, did mention, we didn't look to expand. Further west along um, Mission Avenue at this time with, uh, with the downtown. Um, district. That said, we do have these new mixed-use opportunities. Uh, like mixed-use one, for example, is kind of uh, would afford potentially some opportunities for commercial residential. Uh, criteria that someone could look at without expanding the boundary of downtown through just a redistricting.
So, so this doesn't preclude that different uses in those two vacant lots or soon-to-be vacant lots. Or eventually very.
Yeah, further, further to your question, Council Broadhead, I, I think it's. Those are, we've identified internally as very significant redevelopment potential on those sites. And it's something that we're kind of looking at in the background. Once we kind of pick up capacity, once we get past the land use by law, we can. Assess those specific sites and determine whether we can easily add them or not. But it is for sure, it's a location, um, and the size of those parcels is significant.
Following up on that, Counselor Adrian, please correct me if I'm wrong. I think the timeline is generally unknown, right? So. That the school is still being used right now, uh, to enable the school board to do some construction and then it's subject to. A whole bunch of issues, not the least of which is provincial funding, right? Uh, there, there's a bunch of, I guess, a number of complexities that, that preclude. The definition of a timeline for that particular lot. Is that fair to say, Adrian?
Yeah.
Uh, last question for me, uh. So one, one of the changes in the land use bylaws around signage. Uh, so you've highlighted this in this particular package is around home-based business signage. Uh, size. Is it? Are you allowing electronic signs in people's front? No?
No, uh, Council Broadhead. So, um, with the, the home-based business, uh. Posed recommendations, uh, and the, the potential, the introduction of signage, what we're proposing. For a, a, a home-based business, being a home-based business level two, formerly known as a home occupation. Uh, it would be a window sign only. Uh, point three, point three, so. Uh, one foot by two feet. Uh, would be displayed in a window only and can only advertise the, the name. Of, of the business. So it wouldn't be. Or of signage on the lawn, definitely not digital, uh, so static sign. So that when you're driving by, it could be like, oh, here's Sally's Nail Salon. I know where I'm going. But that's the extent of it for home, home-based business.
Uh, there's lots you can do with, with integral technology today. I just thought of my. But we are open at. Somebody's scale smart. You know what I'm saying?
At this time, we didn't go as far as digital.
Fair enough.
Static text.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, um. Some of my questions might be answered in the presentation we're about to see, but I'll start. With some of the easy stuff. So. In our backgrounder, um. Home-based business signage, so that the one that Council Broadhead was just asking about. Was there a problem we were trying to solve with this change?
Um, through your, uh, Mayor, uh, Madam Mayor, it, it wasn't necessarily a problem. It was more inquiries. Uh, we do have. Home-based, uh, business operators who have asked to have just some sort of signage, uh, to advertise their business. Uh, we understand that other municipalities, we'll, uh, allow home-based businesses to have signage. Um, and you know, from time to time, we've had to enforce, uh, home-based businesses who do have signs, regardless whether they're. Something that seems reasonable or something that seems a little over the top. So this was just a way to kind of, um. Simplify the document to accommodate, uh, home-based business users and business operators.
Okay, so this was, this, this kind of. This was not in our current land use file and we're adding it in to give some clarity. Is that right?
Correct. It's a new regulation or a new.
Okay, perfect then. Um, around the parking, which is the sixth conversation in the backgrounder. Excited to see the, the reductions, uh, but there was a conversation that says the trade-off is a potential limitation of. Adaptive reuse of the developments. Due to reduced amounts. Can you kind of explain what adaptive reuse of that development is?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So basically what we mean is that when the initial. Building gets built, that's when the parking gets calculated. If that business for some reason moves or goes out of business and a new business wants to locate within that. Building, the parking would be reassessed at that time. If the building's already constructed and the parking lot is already constructed, there's some limitations there. Oftentimes they can't get additional parking on the site, even if it's required by the business or by the.
Cause it depends on the use, right? Thank you for that. I was, I thought you were talking about the reuse of the actual parking because as we. Talk about getting less cars on the road, we talk about reusing like parkades and stuff. So that was, that was easy. Thank you for that. I have questions about residential garage size for the presenter, so I'll wait till we get there. So, and when we talked about downtown, this is number eight, downtown tr- transition area. You said there is no density bonus present in the proposed, um, downtown district. Did we have density bonusing before? And is this something that maybe we should be actually exploring as a possibility to encourage development?
We did not have density bonusing. Previously in the downtown district. We've only had it in the R four and I believe the R three A districts. And so we've continued it through those districts. Um, I guess the conversation. Would be around how much? How much more development? I know the M D P, I think, sets a density target of downtown at around a hundred dwelling units. Per hectare, somewhere around there. Um, so. I guess the conversation would be, are we thinking around that area or are we thinking above that in terms of, of how much density we would like to see downtown?
I just. I was hoping density bonusing might actually. Kick off and incentivize some of the areas in the downtown that we want to get developed. So. Might, I, I, I might come back to that because I, I don't want to be doing this at council meeting. How do we do density bonusing and add it in? Does it belong in the land use by law, density bonusing, or can it exist outside of the L U B?
Uh, density bonusing is typically something that would be seen within L U B.
Okay, all right, Adrian, I might follow up with that then. And then, um. When it comes to. The exclusion of front drive zero lot line products, I know we're getting a presentation on that right away, but my first question on this is for, for staff. Um, we have, as far as I know, only one community that's really doing the zero lot line housing at, at this time. They have a completely approved area structure plan that has zero lot lines in it. Would they be? Grandfathered under the old L U B because this would drastically change. Their entire development. So are they grandfathered or is this just for new areas?
Yeah, so, um, essentially wh- whatever regulation that's in effect at the time that they. That they would come in for their development is the, what we would apply. So if front access is in place and a developer comes in and gets their lots subdivided and, and then. Goes forward with their development permit applications, then we would process that. If, if it does not exist, then it doesn't exist. And I would say that. There are A S Ps in place that speak to single-family, um. Or low-density residential, medium-density residential, high-density residential. They don't speak to the exhibit, the specific. Product types. They speak to density categories.
Like, you're, you're absolutely right, Adrian. I guess I'm just saying, um. So you're saying at the time of redistricting, it, this would apply or the development permits?
So, uh, uh, I, I mean, I guess. It, it all has to be in place. Wh- whatever's in place at the time is what we utilize. So if somebody comes in for a subdivision. And the regulations for the size of lot that we would accept under a front access zero. Are there, then we would use that. If front access zero is not uh, enabled, then they would have to either use a lane access or. A different lotting configuration.
So when you say at, whatever's in place at the time, the time is subdivision?
Well, it's, it's all of them. It, it, it has to be consistent throughout the process. So. Uh, you, you have, I mean, I guess if, if you want front access. Uh, zero and front access zero is enabled and you're zoning, you can go that, you can go to that step and then you go to your subdivision, then you go to your development permit. If at any point in time, any of that stuff is not, um, part of the land use by law, then. You hit a stop at that point.
Okay. So I think the answer is that no, that it, and it's, it's the Aaron Ridge, you're sorry, North Ridge North. The Strata Developments. So their plans that they have for full buildout of their community would be greatly impacted by this. I'm assuming because they would not be grandfathered. Okay, that's good. I'll wait till they, they present, um. And I think those were the majority of my initial questions, but I might come back to the density bonusing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Council Killig.
Madam Chair, uh, thank you. Adrian, I have a question around downtown business, um, and the changes being proposed. To main floor, uh, taking away the requirement that they be business-oriented. And, and this, this one's, uh, I'll, I'll say is really troubling to me. So I. I would appreciate, uh, any answers in, in terms of. I go back to our, our strategic planning and, and all the work we did around setting priorities and. And how we would measure and all of that really good conversation that we had. Uh, one of the key points was businesses attract businesses. And so if somebody's coming down. Town for a burger, they might stop for a coffee or go across the street and have. Uh, a beer or go into a, you know, a, a whatever, right? Uh, they come downtown to pick up their dry cleaning, uh, same thing. They might, so I, I'm, I'm very concerned that. Uh, the proposed, uh, amendment say that we can now have. Uh, basically residential. On, uh, street level. And I, I, my sense of all the conversations we've had about a vibrant business downtown. Is that if we bring that in, it'll. Detract to, from, from our key driver of, of everything we've been talking about over the last couple of years. Of trying to get more businesses, uh, downtown and, and once it starts. It, it, I think it becomes a kind of a slippery slope. So. I, number one, I'd be interested in any comments, but I'd also be interested to know. Mr. Fletcher, what's, what's the process if, if the rest of the council is concerned about that of actually. Uh, changing that in, in today's discussion so that the final version. Still sticks, and again, in my mind, and I'm sure the council would support that. But keeping the ground floor as business, uh, oriented. So. Bunch of questions wrapped up in.
Maybe if I could start with the process question, because I think it applies more broadly to anything council may want to tweak today, if that's okay. And then Adrian could talk the specifics. Marta, do you want to sort of handle that very briefly?
So my preference, if at all possible, would be to have a motion that's debated. Um, a general enough motion that basically would give administration guidance to go back and look at those things to see if they're viable. So that when it comes back to first reading in public hearings, we can then present that we looked at them. Here's why we changed it. Here's why we didn't. Um, and so that information we gave presented as part of the public hearing in October. So that would be my preference. Um, but again. Kind of general though, because we don't know without any unintended consequences about looking, you know, further into something like that. That we can for sure do it or not. So, um. High-level guidance to admin would be my preferred process approach.
Based on a majority of council, right?
Today, like, yeah. Cause it is, it's changing from what we already have. So I hope, hopefully that wouldn't be too hard. We would just say stick with what we've already got, but. I'll look to Adrian help for, for some clarity around.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the question because it's a, it's a good one and it's something that, um, we've kicked around and I know council members have provided feedback on it. The, the direction that we took here was based on individual council member comments or feedback. About, you know, basically to. Are we? Are we so afraid of success that we're limiting, um, the type of use in the downtown and not getting anything? Rather than getting something and does that not help to contribute to vitality, et cetera? So right now, uh, it's actually the regulation that prohibits, um, first floor residential is in DARP. It's not in the land use by law. So we have to, we. We change it. We have to amend DARP. If we don't, then we leave it. But, um, I, I guess that, that's the question for council is whether. The concern or the desire to see any type of development, residential or non-residential. Um, supersedes the desire to create. Um, a first floor. Vibrant walk-in business, um, type of, uh, opportunity. But, and I think that if I remember right, the discussion that we have was maybe you could try to. Maybe peel back some of that regulation, see what you get. And then if you get more vitality, then you can go back and. Implement regulation, but right now we're not getting a ton of uptake. We've, we've got some projects that may or may not be underway, but. I think that's, that's the kind of my recollection of those discussions.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I, it's pretty strongly saying, you know, business on main floor or the ground floor stays. We want to make a. Walkable shopping environment, you know, park and. Park wants to use multiple times is the language we collect about. E- et cetera, et cetera. So, um.
So, yeah, this, this would be an area then where more. More constructive feedback of council might help us. Yeah, give direction. Okay.
So we can maybe hold that. Decision discussion and. For some of the other questions they have, we're gonna do it that way. Um, the, the, the other clearly zero wall lines, everybody's interested in that, so I, I won't be that worse. But the, uh. Moving away from, um, in greenfield areas landscaping. Requirements. Uh, I think St. Albert is very proud of its trees and requirement to have boulevard trees and. All of those kind of things. Uh, we, we are, you know, green city. Uh, recognized nationally or internationally, actually. Uh, so, w- when it says we're getting away from in greenfield, we're getting away from the. Described landscaping, I think it was on page seventeen of, of our, of our slide deck or of our. Of our material that we received in it. So what, what does that actually mean? Uh, because I'm. I'm leaning towards having. Really good clarity in going forward on our. What we expect our developers and what we expect our city to look like. Long term, and if we set those expectations rather than removing them. Um, but honestly, that kind of seems a little bit scary to me.
Chelsea could probably jump in. Thank you. Um, so that, right now currently, the land use by law. Right now, currently, the land use by law doesn't have a landscaping requirement for private property for new greenfield development. And so at our last committee hearing, we proposed that I think it was one tree and three shrubs. Added as a minimum base requirement. Um, it didn't seem like a, uh, something. That everybody was really in favor of because then there could be potential enforcement consequences of doing that. And my understanding is that the development community does already tend to put landscaping requirements on the properties um. That they're selling. So we propose to remove that requirement. It's just for the private property, though. It wouldn't impact the boulevard trees where this.
So my, my question was if. If developers and builders are typically doing it. Uh, but that doesn't mean they're all do. Wouldn't it be better for the land use by law to say that? To, to ensure. Because things can change over time. They're, they're typically doing it now, but they're not always doing it. And that we should make that as a, as a requirement. Going forward so that it, everybody is actually doing it and long term. Cause I, I don't know what a developer is going to do. Five, 10 years from now, but I do know the land use by law will be here. Guiding them for long term. So. Why, why not actually say that? And, and be clear about it. And would that be a major, would we, would we get major pushback from?
If I could speak to that, uh, Councilor Killig, I, I think when we. Kind of dove a little bit deeper into the, the pros and cons of it is we're pretty confident that the developers are developing. Um, like from a private property landscaping, you know, uh, in some cases where we were landing with thoughts about, you know, one tree and three shrubs. They're asking for more than that uh in neighborhoods. They're kind of setting the bar for what they're expecting for each of their neighborhoods. We haven't really run into any instance where we're getting developers who are like not requiring anything. Uh, the land use bylaws would currently control things. You know, when you're talking about building pockets, we're, we're trying to ensure we have, you know, grassed areas on each lot. And that type of thing, uh, from a potential resource perspective, um. You could be having staff members having to go out and, and one neighbor phones and is like, well, my neighbor only has two shrubs or their third shrub died or things like that. And I just, we didn't know if that was really. Something if it's, if it's not currently broken and it's currently effective, um, you know, and we're comfortable that we are in some way requiring permeable surfaces and grassed areas. That we didn't want to at this time dive into having to go out and count trees and shrubs and us be the responsible party for that. But again, the line used file as a living document. So if we start finding that those requirements for landscaping and, and what the developers are. Requiring or requesting are starting to get lower and lower, we can always look at that as a potential housekeeping item in the future.
And I, I guess I'll just add to that, like, uh, as you mentioned, as Chelsea mentioned, our. The industry is already requiring this generally. But our initial position was, well, we should make sure, to your point, that it's done. And if industry is already doing it above what our minimum standard is, we want to try a belt and suspenders type of approach, then. It's probably negligible impact whether we include. A one and two or one and three or whatever that number is, and then let industry. Fly above and beyond that if they want to.
Okay, yeah, it, it's just, I know our, our greenscape is pretty important to. Everything that St. Albert is botanical art center, right, city. So I, it just struck me, it's funny that we wouldn't, we would have removed that, but. Okay, I, I would also say thank you for that clarification on the spot districts because I had no clue what that meant. In the background or so, uh, thanks for that simple clarification. Um, so back to. Downtown business on main floor. Has anybody else got any other questions?
You can wrap up and then Councilor Hughes has some.
Okay, I'll, I'll wrap up there, right?
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of questions. So the parking reduction we're talking about for the townhouses, et cetera, that you've mentioned. So what are you, because you're saying you're still requiring two parking spaces. So how is it being reduced? For residential?
Residential townhouse complexes. Yes, I will go to that slide. Okay, so thank you for that question. We're only proposing to reduce the parking for the townhouse complexes. So not the singles, so the fee simple lots. Where everybody uh owns their land and just has a party wall agreement that we were proposing to keep as two stalls. So this one, the complexes, they're typically bigger parcels. They have multiple buildings. And so we were proposing to reduce it down from two stalls to one point five stalls per dwelling unit. So what can happen in that situation is if you look at this one, it's a fifty unit townhouse complex. Um. Currently, we have two stalls per dwelling unit and one stall per five for visitor parking. So you'd need about a hundred and ten required stalls. If the proposal to reduce went through, you would need about eighty-three required stalls. We were thinking that what we could see on some of those units is that there could be um single car garages for a single unit to have a smaller unit on the townhouse complexes.
Okay. It just seems like a real, I'm, I'm always hesitant because I've never seen a complex where you're like, there's just too much parking. Like, I've never. Seen that and that, I mean, that we're looking at a pretty, pretty big drop here, like almost thirty, right? Oh, so. I guess, I'm, I'm wondering just your thought process on the consequences of this, like. I understand the development community, it always helps that situation, but. What was the? What was the thought process behind reducing it to that much? Because I mean, like on a fifty units, that's a big, some of them are like a hundred. So we're looking at sixty less units, uh, parking stalls. And I've never seen somebody that said. Just too much darn parking going on here. Uh. And so, um, I, I don't know how that would, I'm, I'm worried about the consequences of that. So can you just please share a little bit about that?
Um, I, I can answer a component of that and feel free to add anything. So, uh, Councilor Hughes. When we were looking at the townhouse complexes, we felt a little bit of comfort in the fact that there is also then that visitor parking requirement. So if need be, there's some fluidity or, you know, it can operate a little more organically if there is a little bit of overflow. Hockey playoffs or, you know, holidays and things are a little bit busier. We were a little bit comfortable with that, that there was be the visitor parking. Um. The other component of that is that we have taken several townhouse complexes as of late to the subdivision and development appeal board specifically related to onsite parking requirements. Um, they have more often than not been able to, to prove that, that some reductions. They can still make it work or, you know, from an ownership model, these lots are smaller. Um, you know, not everyone has two cars, et cetera. Uh, and these, these products or these complexes have been approved. By the appeal board and they're now built and, and operating. Um. So I, I mean, that was two of the kind of factors that we had heard from industry. We'd had some successful appeals before the appeal board. And we also had that, uh, the visitor parking component that, that potentially. Could help.
Let me ask you this. For the ones that went to SDA, did they ask for this level of reduction to get it approved or was it less of a reduction?
Uh, it was more.
It was more than this?
We've, we've had some significant uh appeals approved as it relates to parking and onsite driveways.
You know, and I, and I'm not arguing with you. I understand what you're saying. I'm just thinking like, they also had that one on St. Albert Trail, St. Albert Crossing, they also got their parking reduction. And there were consequences to that as well. So just because they were successful and they build it does not necessarily mean it will be a success long term. Um, but I appreciate you didn't go as far as they've asked for, but I'm just, it'll be interesting to see what the consequences are of that. Um, the other one was about DARP, about the increase in heights. So. Do you have a slide just because you guys kind of mentioned we're going to increase the heights? And, uh, what are we, what are we doing on that for? For details? You know?
Sure, so I can go. It was a very minimal height increase. I think in some cases it was one meter or two meters. But if you want a specific outline, I, so I didn't prepare a slide.
Okay.
So I guess. Why would we bother to change the heights then if it's a minimal change? Yes, sorry. Just conferring with my colleague. There was a, there, we were trying to align to DARP because in some cases the map in DARP and what was in the land use by law previously did not match.
I guess, and the other thing I'm wondering is, did we make any of these, I mean, I really should guess you're just doing to align with it, but did we actually talk to? Businesses? Like, because that this is what they want or that's what they would do to actually redevelop. I understand that the, I understand the flexibility of the residential in the main floor. I think there definitely has been feedback of just so. The limitations of some things that would not yet necessarily would be residential that can't be in there because it's not considered commercial, like offices, et cetera. Um. So I can understand all that, but I'm trying to figure out, like. I look at the community hall, for example, and they can't do any expansions at all or really do any major improvements to their building unless they go up several stories, which then. Means they can't, they can't change their building. It's like this is built in nineteen forty-seven and we can't make it better. Because DARP is limiting their ability because they can't do three stories in a community hall. So I'm, I'm just trying to figure out if the. Okay, I guess like really what you're doing is just making status quo with what you've done, like just fixing the heights so it matches. Um. And I'm just wondering, has there been any discussions at all about the fact that these building heights might actually be part of limitation for getting other redevelopment to occur?
Uh, I, I, I guess I'll start. Yeah, I, I know that we've had discussions about whether that is in fact the case, um. If we have a minimum of three stories and somebody can only come in with two stories. Again, do you want to? You know? What, what's your tolerance for waiting for somebody to be able to afford three plus stories and the economies of all that kind of thing or? Some of the lots are pretty small, um, and what can you actually fit on those lots? So, yeah, we've, we've had a lot of discussions about. I guess what's actually implementable, what, what might encourage redevelopment or not. Um. This was, as you said, it was just kind of to take out a misalignment of the two documents. Um, but i- it's something that we're, I guess, behind the scenes, we've been kicking around, but we haven't. Come to any resolution yet, whether it's, uh, you know, like. It's simple. I, I think, you know, if you've seen in the DARP, the DARP is very, is hyper-specific on heights. Um, down to the parcel in some cases, which I would say is probably not the direction we want to go in the future. But do you want to go as far as to say from two to 10 stories anywhere downtown, let it happen and see what you get? You know, but.
Yeah.
It's a discussion.
I, I think that personally, I think this is a limitation. It's just that it's sometimes just not cost feasible to go up. I look at like the arts and heritage building on the corner and. People who built it at the time, my understanding is they couldn't go above two stories because the soil would really wouldn't support it. Like, you just. Ge- geotechnical issues, right? So. Say you have to build on something that, you know. You know, that Monty Python, right? You know, I built the castle and it sunk and I built another one and it sunk. Well, they're not going to build four castles to sink it and then you get the curtains. So, um. You know, so I'm just, that's just a thought, just a thought that I just wanted to bring up because I know we're just discussing that. Um, regarding the. Uh, zero lot lines and if you were to put, or if we were to put front driveways. How many trees would we lose in those front boulevards? Do we know?
Uh, well, I think generally you're going to get tree, but species that you're going to get is.
But I also look at it like you have one too. So if you had just lane and you had it all across, you'd have like tree, 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 tree. And now you're going to have like driveway, driveway, small space driveway, driveway. So it's like, how many trees would we have had? Maybe you don't have this answer now, but we'd great to have it later. Is like, we would have had ten trees and now we have three because we physically can't put it and there's also a fire um hydrant. Having one of the spaces. And so, you know, for just as a community that's very devoted to their trees, as we've seen with many things, including the petition recently. Um, I'm just wondering how many trees we'd lose as the front scape.
You know, and we can do that. I, and I think that industry has done some calculations on that as well. Um, I, it's. Again, I think that it's generally nominal, but it's also kind of layout specific, as you've said, with where the driveways fall and where the. Our podiums and all that stuff sit, but we can.
Yeah, and then, um, how much on-street parking would we actually also have if that became a reality?
Yeah, we, and we've done some of that calculation.
Again, because there's fire hydrants and stuff on the lake. So I, I just. I can see the value in the lane product. I've seen other communities that do it with the lane product in front and even do four blocks as a lane front in, in front and it's quite a lovely. Front scape that way and the trees are there and you don't feel like it's crowded. And I'm, I'm also seeing it with all the driveways. And actually it feels like chaos as you're driving, especially if it's garbage day. Good luck to everybody. So, okay, that's it. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, I'm just going to ask you a few questions and we'll go to you. Um, parking, what does it mean that admin is too relaxing the requirements for, um. Near market or affordable housing?
So at this time, we don't have in the current draft, we don't have provisions written um for that. But it's definitely something that we've had um discussion around. So if, if council wanted us to, um. Pursue that, research it more and, and potentially consider it for this draft, we'd be open to that.
And again, this goes back to, um, we hadn't, we hadn't shown this or hadn't discussed this with council previously. Um, we've kicked around the notion about. If we want to, we know that affordability is a challenge everywhere. Um, and if we want to work to maybe. Encourage that product and if we want to. Help to reduce costs of construction. There are things that we could do just from a policy perspective or a regulation perspective in this case, that could. Encourage that.
Yeah, so to, to your kind of question about have we ever had a, a developer want? Not need all of their parking, home lawn housing doesn't use all of their parking in Mornville.
And, and that's typically the feedback that we've gotten when there are affordable projects is that. A lot of times the residents in. Projects that have affordability requirements may not have the same number of cars as. Um, market rate units. Um, and then in the cases where the parking is actually required, the residents actually. Often won't use those parking stalls if they are required to pay additional for them. So they'll find. On-street parking somewhere else. So it's not really solving, it may not really solve the problem.
So if we wanted you to explore that, just a motion today, would you helpful just to say, hey, come back with suggestions?
Confirming motion.
Okay, I can do that word out, throw that out here. Um, we've talked about it already, but the properties on Green net to me a little bit more.
Uh, those never had the, the land use by law requirements that Boardwalk did.
Yeah.
So Boardwalk was already viewed as kind of like a, a step between the residential on the other, the single family on the other side and downtown.
Yeah.
Greengrove has always just been, um, low density residential, I think there, so.
The, sorry, the businesses on Greengrove. So there's, there's all.
Oh, you're talking further up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess.
On the way to St. Albert.
Yeah, then for sure we need to study, like if we want to talk up to like sparkling bubbles or.
Yeah.
We did not look at that as a new, that's a new one.
Okay, so, so we've had, we've had inquiries from the, um, the owners of those single family properties right on the corner. Kind of right across the street from downtown, basically. And so is there an opportunity to kind of expand land uses? They kind of stop, you know what I mean? Like there's, there's the, the commercial for most of it from the St. Albert Trail until you hit those two houses. There's only two of them. And then we've got downtown. So those two houses are kind of stuck in the middle. They're not in a residential area.
So, um, I guess that there's an owner that staff has spoken with.
Yeah.
Enough over time.
Yeah.
Um, we've encouraged them if they. This is going in history.
Yeah.
Um, if they wanted to proceed, then they should, you know, work to put forward an application.
Yeah.
Um, because we're still trying to focus on many other things.
Okay.
Um, and it's, it's much the same, like, we, we have not done. The extent of all of our general, like, specific knowledge, like. Specific knowledge about downtown servicing, et cetera, stops at that intersection. So we don't know. What's beyond that. And frankly, we're still trying to work to get development to happen. In the downtowns before.
So it's more of a capacity issue for just even looking at that.
We just haven't, yeah.
Would that be more part of the infill strategy?
I think that there's a, yeah, there's a couple of these things that I think. Some of our commercial areas of downtown, whether we actually look at the. Overall downtown regulations, just to that bigger picture, like have we been too prescriptive?
Yeah.
And maybe stubbed our toe in the process.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think that that's, that's all on the table that we've been talking about, but we don't have. We need to get a couple of these major projects off of our table before we can move on to that stuff.
No, thank you. That's helpful, which kind of leads into the NABE and Father Jan question, kind of going back to that. It, is that parcel two just a matter of capacity to look at the servicing to that?
Okay, it's again, it's the same conversation. We look at it and it's like. I mean, it's. A block off of downtown, what, it's.
Yeah, it's perfect.
How much better located could it be?
Yeah.
And could, what could you do there?
Yeah.
But we're just not.
Have, have we had preliminary conversations with the school board? Because I, you know, if the, the city kind of preemptively. Changed the land use for that area, I, I would assume it would increase the property values for the school board and kind of give them more choices.
Yeah, yeah. So as soon as we were made aware that. Yeah. Yeah. So as soon as we were made aware that, um. That school was closing, we reached out to the school. School board to. Offer any sort of insights or assistance in exploring options.
Yeah.
Um, and we have. Made ourselves available also.
Okay, so I haven't really heard back from them. Not. Okay, preliminary.
It, well, and I think part of it to what Mr. Fletcher said is they are utilizing the building while they see it on some of their. Other. Facilities. So I think that that was. All attributed. Not, they weren't interested because they definitely seemed interested, but I just. Their, their. Their primary role is education. They're not land developers. And so I think that they're trying to just work on that so far.
Fair enough. Um, is it special area number three? I guess that's what they're called. Um, does the, how would the change? Impact? Traffic if the actual business changed? So right now, there's not a whole lot of traffic in and out of there, but. Will the proposed change allow them to have a business that would possibly increase traffic to the point where it would get yucky on the trail? Does that make sense? It's page eleven on the.
Eleven, it's the, it's the Jiffy Loop site.
Um, so with the, that Jiffy Loop, um, site, it's kind of unique. So it's, um. It was incorporated and part of downtown.
Yeah.
But you can't get to it because of the grade, the significant grade. Um, and they only have the access off of, of St. Albert Trail. So if you're wondering if someone ever was, if. If the loop city, city was no more, Jiffy Loop was no more.
Yeah.
Probably have more options for.
But so I guess my concern, my concern is that, is it gonna, are we gonna see backed up traffic if the business changes to something that, that?
Access would always be limited on that tech. Okay, so it's the same.
And that would be part of the DP process. It would just, sorry, you can't have a business that has.
Been that people left out there.
Okay, thank you. My second last question, um, so I brought this up before, but the federal push for more, um, multi-unit. Developments and being allowed to do that, we're falling short of what, what the federal government is asking for. Is that just means that we don't get grant funding? We're just kind of at a lack?
Yeah, so maybe I'll, I'll start with that and then. Um, if Barbara Chelsea wanna jump in, uh. Yes, so basically we enabled plexes on some corners of locations. Um, what we understand with this grant money is that. By right. You could have three or four plexes anywhere in residential.
Yeah.
Um. Internally, we've had discussions about. The reception. Um, that that could or would receive in the city and. I guess, I guess. Within the city. And again, it's kind of like, it's the same, it's a similar discussion with, with, uh, that we want to have when we do the infill strategy is. Where can you actually densify without like. Create more units without negatively impacting the neighborhood, how it functions, expectations about your future property use, value, et cetera. Um, so there's definitely strings attached with that money. And council is going to have to. Um, at some point make a decision on. Provide direction on whether we want, we want those strings or not. Cause there are other things that we can do that. Can encourage units.
Yes.
Um, that maybe aren't. Plexes as a by right everywhere, or maybe it's. In developing areas, you can have plexes everywhere, but. We develop neighborhoods, we build, there's any, there's a range of options at that point, but we just, again, it's. That's an impactful one for existing residents and it is more than the scope of what we're looking at with that.
Um, and then, uh, Council Hughes' comment about the geotech limitations to height downtown. Can you tell me more about that? You know?
I'm not an engineer. Mr. Fletcher's an engineer either. That wasn't an engineer.
Not a good one.
I, I think, um, you know, depending on the engineer, you ask the, you can engineer a lot. So. There are known soil conditions in the downtown. There's known. High water conditions in the downtown, which require certain construction. Methods or, or mitigations, I guess.
So it's not that we can't, like, it's not that they can't build over two stories. It's just prohibitively expensive in some.
It may in some cases, in some locations be more expensive depending on. What your geotech is, you're like, yeah. It, it can get involved. We've, we did a, the city did our own kind of preliminary geotech throughout downtown, just so that we'd have an understanding. Of conditions. If people were interested that they can come in and start to have that understanding before they kind of go. Buy the whole thing. Um, so we do make that available, but, um, there, there are conditions which add to the cost of construction, which then may make it. The economics maybe don't. Pan out for some.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Heron.
Thank you. Uh, and. Natalie, if you want, I can make that motion on, um. Whatever wording is to explore the. Parking reductions for the affordable housing. Yeah, I think whatever you guys come up with for wording, I can do that. Um, I asked if someone from McDev, so I think Pat Nichols jumped online. Thank you for that. Uh, it was around two things. Back to Counsel Kilik's conversation about keeping the main floor in the downtown area. The retailer or commercial stuff. So I'm just wondering. Pat's online, but if anyone can answer if there has been. Um, a push or a movement from. Leasing or, or investors to put, um, to move away from that. And, and what would that do for? The vibrancy if, if we all of a sudden had a bunch of. Professionals, like lawyers and stuff downtown instead of the retail. So. I think Pat would probably be better to answer that one. I'm not sure.
I'm good to answer that. Good morning, everyone. Um, at this stage, we have not received, um, any kind of inquiries asking for that specifically. I mean, obviously we are very low in office space, so. You know, some of that, uh, does come up, um, but no specific requirements to actually move away from retail. As a matter of fact. Uh, we're seeing more retail actually move in to, to the downtown when, when vacancy becomes available. So. Um, I would say that's not being impacted.
Okay, perfect. Counsel Kilik, I kind of, go ahead, sorry.
I was just gonna say, I think the, the one sort of potential exception is there have been discussions related to the twenty-two St. Thomas development. About the potential impact of residential on the first floor specific to that development. So. Not, you know, impacting sort of broader downtown, but that has been raised as, as a point of discussion.
Okay, and, and that makes sense. And I can see that as a. Maybe a good exception to the rule, but instead of change, I, I would, I'd rather not see the entire rule change for everything just for that one building. So we might need to figure out how we can just. Give them an exemption and maybe it comes into, you know, these are the things we'll do for affordable housing. It's parking and. Residential on the main floor. I'm not sure how that works. I forgot to ask also about the downtown. The very bottom of page fourteen of our, um. Package, it says there's was also consideration for taking regulations out of DARP. And relocating that content to the land use by law. So you said there was consideration, but you didn't, didn't really specify if that has happened and if we need to have a. A public hearing on the DARP bylaw as well.
That, that would pertain to the actual regulation, uh, limiting first floor. Residential in the dark. So it's.
So that's the only, that's the only piece that you.
And it's not, yeah, it's still in the dark. We haven't moved out of the dark yet.
Okay, perfect. And then, um. Pat, now that you're here, there was a conversation earlier about density bonusing. I just kind of did my quick research and. Um, so it is a bonusing of floor area relaxations and is a zoning tool that permits developers to build additional floor area, area. In exchange for amenities and affordable housing needed by the community. So. Thinking of a very particular developer who's been sitting vacant in our downtown for a while. And I'm wondering if any conversations have happened with that. Builder about density bonusing.
Yes. Yes and no. Um, we have had, uh, again, it's all. Um, preliminary conversations, which I can't quite disclose everything.
No.
But density would not be of concern at this point for them.
Okay, and Adrian, it says in Toronto, density bonuses are negotiated between the city and the site developer on a case-by-case basis. So if we don't include it in the land use by law today, does it still allow for that conversation and that negotiation to happen? Um, outside of land use by law in the future?
Could you, could you ask that again?
So it sounds like, I ca- I don't understand it a hundred percent, but, um. They say in Toronto, the density bonusing is negotiated between the city and the site developer on a case-by-case basis. So I don't know if it's in there, whatever they call their land use by law in Ontario. Or if it's just a conversation and it can happen without it being in the bylaw.
Yeah, so I guess, um, the example within our, our four district is that happens. With the developer at the time that they come in for their application, when they're trying to understand. If I provide X amenity, can I get? X number more units or footage or whatever it is.
Right.
It, that's how it's transacted. Um, but if we don't have. A requirement or provisions enabled within this land use by law, then you wouldn't see. It applied. It has to be, has to be specified. It's basically the community saying, if you give us this, which we want, then you'll get something.
But so it only occurs in R four, and if I want it in the downtown as well, can we just mirror the language in the R four district in the downtown district?
I think we could generally poach something along that, yeah.
Just for the flexibility. I'm not saying it's gonna happen. It just allows flexibility and maybe would get some development and maybe some amenities or maybe some affordable housing into the downtown. Not on the, you know, um, I will probably need help, uh, in the future, maybe from Marta, and I don't know if that needs to happen today. But to just introduce that to the downtown district.
And, and Mayor, I did want to confirm, uh, so Christina did confirm for us that, uh, there probably is some room for density bonusing within. The downtown because, um. We have policy that says that density should be over one twenty-five and then we've got, uh, policy, which is a minimum of a hundred dwelling units per hectare. So there is a little bit of a. A buffer that we could utilize if we want to go down the bonusing road.
Okay, so process-wise, do you need that motion today?
I think that would be our preference, Mayor, if, if you really want us to push on that.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not, I wouldn't call it a push. I just feel like it's just adding some flexibility.
Yeah, yeah. If you're asking us to look into implementing that, yeah, for sure.
Okay, so. So it looks like I'm gonna maybe propose two motions, uh, Chair, one. On the density bonusing in the downtown and one on parking for affordable housing units. So. Marta, can you help me with that as we go down this? Go down this date, um, but it looks like we've got a lot in front of us, so it can wait.
So I think so far we've got three motions that are gonna be proposed. So the two that Mayor mentioned, also, um, Counsel Kilik will do the motion on. Main floor and I would like to add, uh, an exemption for the near market product. Um, on that as well. So however you guys want to structure that.
So if I could recommend the conversation carry on and when we get to the end, perhaps I'd recommend a, uh.
Do the.
Recess, uh, where.
Perfect.
Legit legal can work with. To, to sort of gin those up. They'll do their best to get drafts in the meantime.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mayor?
No, I'll just, there might be another one on the, obviously on the zero lot line, um, conversation, depending on where. Where the presentation from the development community goes, but that might be another change today or. I would be happy to entertain some sort of wording around grandfathering that one community and with the current bylaw. Either way.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, and we've got a presentation is coming up. Is that, that the idea over here?
Yeah. I can do a presentation.
Sure. So we'll do, well, we'll do a.
But I have a lot of material.
Perfect. That's great. So let's take a five-minute break, um, and then we can be back here eleven o'clock and go on.
I made my kids, but both third grade, I made my kids start packing their lunch. And I'm like, you packed your lunch, I check it.
Thank you to whoever's controlling Zoom.
We've had to talk to them.
You're back.
Then just text me when we're, because there's a land use by law, and I think they're going to talk about 17 hours, so I'm like
So we've got a brief presentation from Courtney Jensen and Dave.
Make them learn.
Armstrong. I've asked Courtney to keep kind of the actual presentation piece pretty quick, and then if we have specific questions, that'll kind of give her to expand if it's needed.
Somebody
We won't go over that stuff that we don't need.
Somebody needs to mute. There's somebody who's talking and I can't figure out who it is.
Such a thing. I'm like, put the water in the
I muted her. We're good. Okay, so um, yeah, we'll leave you guys to it for a few minutes and then we'll get into questions.
Hey, um, I'll try and be quick. Uh, I did try and take some notes. Oh, sorry. I did try and take some notes while you guys were speaking. Um, we didn't prepare a presentation in advance because we haven't seen an updated draft of what the changes have been since last Senate committee, the whole, so we didn't know it had changed. Um, nor did we know what you guys were going to ask. So I brought a ton of material. Um, this material has been sent to you all, but it's also available to you all at any time. So let me know if you need that. Um, I am no longer the St. Albert UDI Chair, Mike Yocum is. Um, but I was the UDI Chair when the municipal development plan passed, and I had been through a lot of this land use by law, so I'll be speaking with multiple hats today. Um, also, I was the previous regional chair for UDI. Uh, and a lot of these figures are from our regional tour, which we did not see a lot of your faces on, um, where we showed some of the up and coming new products that builders are building in the region. Um, that line up, we think, well, with some things we'd like to see here in the future, so. Uh, I'll start by saying that the MDP passed a few years ago, and um, I don't think I'm saying anything controversial when I say it was a pretty aspirational MDP. Um, we did provide some feedback saying we're going pretty far on a few of these items, and we were told, yes, we are, and we want to. We want this MDP to be progressive and aspirational. And um we are expecting a land use by law that lines up with that MDP and moves with it so that we can continue to move forward in a progressive way as well. Um, and and we are feeling a little bit disappointed about a few of the changes that are being made that that feel a little bit regressive to us in terms of where we're seeing the market go with. Um, and again, our references aren't just in St. Albert. It is regional. The city of Edmonton and other smaller municipalities surrounding. Um, seeing the zero lot line come out, uh, that's a big change in a negative direction for us, and we're not seeing a lot of new options being added in, in the form of smaller pockets. Uh, I I'll pause there for one second and acknowledge and thank it been though we we have been engaged. We haven't not been engaged. We did send a spreadsheet. Um, I there were some of our, our comments taken into account. Um, but we were hoping to see this go farther, frankly. Um, the concerns that are being raised now over the zero lot line, they're no different than the concerns that were raised when we first went to council on zero lot line. And at that time, it was acknowledged that there was balancing that had to be done between competing interests. And some of those concerns were worthwhile to bring a new product in uh to this community. No full street in St. Albert has been built since that time with zero lot line finished out. So these concerns aren't coming up in a real way from people living in these homes. There is not a street yet that has been built out with all of the zero lot line homes on it. These are concerns that are coming up, I assume, from old residents who are a little nervous about zero lot line, perhaps. Um, but those are people who have homes in St. Albert. They had the opportunity to buy a home in St. Albert. They are living here happily. And, you know, we don't want those people closing the door to new home buyers who maybe say this is my chance to get in. I get that it's not your preference, but I am the buyer today making that decision for me and my family, whatever that family looks like. Um, one of the items that Kathy brought up in terms of area structure plans and existing area structure plans and what will happen if this type, or if this housing product goes away, it's a serious concern. My area structure plan hits 40 units per uh hectare, which is the limit. That's with the entire area that is low density being zero lot line. If zero lot line is gone, I will have no single family homes in my area structure plan. I've already sold my two multi sites and the development permits are in and approved. So I don't have the flexibility unless my houses get smaller, I will fail the density test. I can't put in a bunch more lanes. All of my lots are facing out onto roads or boundaries. It would have to be a complete replan of that neighborhood. Um, that will apply. Uh, I know it will apply in a big way to my area, but I will also just point a finger because uh I mean, Shiro also, it does have a bunch of zero lot lines in it. So if you've been there and you thought this community doesn't have zero lot line, not correct. It also has zero lot line and it's just hitting its density as planned. So if this form of single family housing is removed, compensation will have to be made in the form of more duplexes, more townhomes, or more medium density sites, which are big changes in our area structure plans. Um, it does feel like a lot of our discussion is about lot width. And it's, we can not talk about lot width. That's a, it's a key metric of how we talk about how we're designing our communities. Um, but I do hope that once I pass the, the floor over to Dave, we, we move a little bit away from that. Um, I will refer again because a lot of this material is from the field trip and, and Kathy was at the field trip, Adrian was at the field trip, and Donnie was there. But if you're seeing some stuff and you're going, why don't I know about this? You can send me an email or give me a phone call and I will redo this field trip for you. I can do it a lot faster with just a few people. But we went into a Cantero home. Um, it actually was shown, we just went by it, I think, I think it's on page 14. Light, I am going to hit 14. Um, it was 18 feet wide. It has, um, you can see here, it's almost 2,000 square feet. It had uh an 18 foot wide pocket, so it was the 18 foot wide garage. It had a little room in the bottom that you could use as a home office or as a playroom, and it felt like an executive kind of townhome. It is, I mean, it's not at the very bottom of the price point, but when you take a look at this, A, it can get significantly more expensive than a 24 foot wide front attached zero lot line. Um, but it can also hit a different affordability like marker. It's got really huge windows, so it feels really spacious. And frankly, when you're saying, does somebody want a 20, 24 foot wide front attached zero lot line home, or do they want a laved 18 foot? Um, like three story, it's not going to be the same answer for everybody and just saying 24 foot wide, that's as small as will go. 22 foot wide, that's as small as will go. 18 feet wide, that's as small as will go. These are not the same home over and over again, just squished. These are designed in different ways to meet different needs of different family organizations. Um, with no children, with multiple children. I mean, one of our favorite terms these days is domestic restructuring. I know that St. Albert has traditionally been a two parent, 2.2 child and dog neighborhood or municipality, but that's that's not what everybody is these days. That's not what half of people are these days. And so you know, when we're looking at a land use by law and we're talking about pockets, and we're coming and saying, we want smaller pockets. It's not to do the same house over and over again. It is to hit that missing middle in different ways. And uh you know, when we go on tours like this, I think it, it's much more obvious than when you see like a subdivision plan with, with rectangles on it. It's not very meaningful that way. Um, I'd also like to bring up, you know, that we're not seeing some further steps that we thought we might see. Um, townhomes. Our townhomes are at a minimum of 18. And again, to that point of we keep having numbers and putting lines under them, but you know, we've shown on our bus tour that there's a huge market starting to come up for 12 and 14 foot townhomes. Can you imagine that? You could if you came and I showed them to you. I thought there's no way a person could live in this. And I went to see a couple and they are so different than what you expect, and they're not taking the place of a duplex or a larger townhome. They're taking the place of things like apartment style condominiums. So it's a different thing being used for a different purpose than it used to be. But when you take a look at them, they're very similar in terms of square footage and price as to what people used to have. Like when I got my first home, it was a two bedroom apartment style condo. Now, these have almost the same square footage. Instead of having one parking uh spot in a parcade where your you know, your car gets dusty and people can draw things on your windows, you have your single private garage that you can use as you want. And it's not, like again, we it's hard to look at just a road layout and go yes or no. It's much more impactful to come and see some of this built form and get how we're not just doing the same thing again, but skinnier, but we're doing new things to meet needs that have been underserviced in the past.
Courtney used to kind of, kind of keep thinking, like what I'm hearing is you're kind of asking for leave zero lot lines alone for, for the front drive product, um and also how would like for the lot widths, are you looking like, would it be appropriate to a minimum average lot width within a certain area or?
I
I don't know what tools kind of
Like I know that, that one of the things that was referenced is we took out zero lot line because the lot width distribution was gone and that kept us with variety, but that didn't keep you with variety. That forced housing to not align with market demand. So that's a problem for us because when we don't align with market demand, we stagnate. And the community stagnates. Um, so what we'd like to see is we'd like to see a land use by law that allows us to move with the market, bring in the kind of products that are selling now and into the future. Um, and that includes zero lot line, includes smaller pockets. Um, I'm trying to see if there's anything else that's like really big that I need to speak to there, but I mean, it's just, we want more flexibility. And we don't want it through some sort of a prescribed distribution of like how big these lots have to be because you can say our community has to be 90% people who can afford a 50 foot wide lot. It doesn't mean you get that. It means you close the door to the people that don't adhere to that naturally through the market. So we've, we've been in that place in the past. St. Albert is very well served in terms of state lots and serve in terms of larger lots. Um, we don't want artificial um manipulation of the market. We want to be able to provide the new products that our home buyers want as is shown to us through their demand in the marketplace. So it's a, it's complicated to ask. It really comes, it does come down to smaller numbers in terms of narrowness and allowing zero lot line, but it's so difficult to boil it down to that because it doesn't capture what we're actually asking for.
So, so from here, gee, I'm kind of looking to everyone in the room. Do you guys want to ask kind of questions of Courtney? And then we can go five minutes with uh Dave, and then we can have
Okay, let's get to the parking and street design real quick.
Okay.
That has actual illustrations here. So when you have zero lot line, one side of the street has no side yard and the other side of the street has five feet. When someone can't afford a zero lot line, you don't get a traditional lot with a traditional home. They don't just get extra money and go, okay, if I, if I can't get that zero lot line, I'm going to have um, the same unit, but with two side yards that are four feet. I'm going to give you back what you have. You go, I can afford this. If I can't have it, I don't get a bigger single family home with a bigger lot. I get a duplex. A duplex has a four foot side yard. So when you're looking at a streetscape and you're saying, we're going to take out zero lot line, you're losing five foot side yards and you're getting four foot side yards. That is not a gain in terms of uninterrupted curve. Also with zero lot line, you are required to have lanes across the street from it. Once you go to a traditional front attached, you put fronts attached across the street because why would you pay for a lane when you haven't gained anything through the street design? So if we could go to the next slide here really quickly. I mean, these, these are kind of in a package that I've sent you guys before, but can send you at any time again. But you can see what we do. We've got our zero lot lines. We create courtyarding so that we have some space for street furniture, snow, trees. But the big thing is, no matter if we had if you put three extra feet on each of, or yeah, three extra feet on each of those front attached units, you still don't get nearly the amount of benefit in terms of offsetting those challenges as you do by having the laved product across the street from it. And I don't want to say the answer is putting all lanes everywhere because people do still want attached garages. But the point that's being made here is the actual best solution is when you take differing products and combine them in a way And combine them in a way. Where the advantages and disadvantages of one offset the advantages and disadvantages of the other. And.
Okay.
And there's a whole bunch, like, I mean, if you scroll down, there's a whole bunch of illustrations of this. Um.
So I'm going to leave that so we can look at those, kind of if there are any questions to those points maybe, but but we'll leave it. Kind of otherwise, did you have, is there any other? Part of the land use bylaw that you wanted to touch on?
Um, the last one I wanted to touch on was the, oh, sorry, here's a. It's a real subdivision in Fort Saskatchewan. And what you see is.
We'll ask questions about this if we need to, but we'll go to the last point if you.
And then the last point is on the townhomes. Um, the eighteen-foot garage. Sorry, the twenty-foot garage being the minimum size still. But allowing the encroachment into the side yard. It works in all cases except interior unit townhomes. On an interior unit townhome. It still is only eighteen feet wide. That's your most affordable unit in your townhome, you. You charge more for the end units because they have more windows, they have more land. You get the twenty-foot garage. But then on that interior unit, you can't hit that eighteen-foot. Um, width, and again. We'd like to see that, we'd like to see even smaller.
Thank you, so any questions for? No. Okay. Dave, we'll give you five minutes and then we can do questions with you and then we can come back to administration if we have questions on. On the side, does that work for everybody? Yeah, okay, thank you.
So I just brought you guys an example, a little bit about Pay Center. We're in over thirty communities and um. And over eight municipalities in the area, so we've built everywhere. And we don't build anything unless we've talked to the customer and we understand what the customer wants. Because that's a pretty big risk for my business, especially when we're closing over six hundred homes a year. So we have a lot of customer feedback on what customers want. And where we have gotten in trouble is we've gone out and built. You know, we're, we figure, oh, we're going to sell in this community a dozen twenty-six-pocket single-family homes and we build them. And the market can't buy them, and we have to reduce and reduce and reduce our prices to move that product. So we're always very careful to build what we think the market's going to absorb. And in this case, so this is our show home, uh, it's probably our best-selling house in the CMA, so. That would probably make it the best-selling house of all our competitors, considering the volume we do. It's about eighteen hundred square foot home and it has everything, it's got a great kitchen, three bedrooms, bonus room. Um, now to stop at that price for a second there, so. I've got a comparison between zero lotline and a non-zero lotline on this house based on a twenty-four-pocket. Uh, uh, building pocket, and you can see that's eighteen thousand dollars. Now, with this whole parking conundrum, we seem to think that everybody has an F-150 and they don't. My research and my focus groups show that they don't and they don't care. And so when I focus group a house like this, I say, would you give me, or would you like an extra two-foot wider garage? Everybody says yes. Would you like a two-foot deeper garage? Everybody says yes. Okay, but a two-foot wider garage is going to cost you this, do you still want it? Absolutely not, I'd rather have ten-foot ceilings. Well, how about a little bit deeper? Absolutely not. So when it's free money, everybody wants it, but when they have to pay for it, nobody wants the money in the garage. And so what we've also found is if you go out and start looking for Toyota RAV4s and Honda Civics. That's all you're going to see, they're two of the most popular cars in Canada. But for some reason, we're fixated on the F-150. It's just not as popular and there's not as many as we think that that there are, but we seem to think that. So we try to always make sure there's room for that F-150 in the garage. But we don't have F-150 customers coming in and not buying homes because their F-150 doesn't fit in the garage. That is never a reason that we lose the sale of a home. And the front-attached garage, so at five forty-nine on a zero lotline, you got to remember that's on a twenty-four building pocket. But this house is a twenty-two pocket. And it's my best seller. I'm the largest seller of single-family homes in Alberta and my twenty-two-pocket zero lotline, single-family home is the best seller in Alberta. And so we put it on a twenty-four pocket because it just sells and everybody loves it. So if you scroll down just a little bit more. You can see. This is the building implication on a twenty-two pocket versus a twenty-four. So when Courtney speaks to, you know, we're trying to regulate the pockets and the widths. It's all stemming from what we think we, the, we're telling the customers, first we're telling the customers, you have to buy an F-150 because that's what we planned our communities and homes for. And it's just not the case, so that's another twelve thousand dollars. So you take away zero lotline and you tell the customer they have to have a twenty-four pocket. But you lost eight, you charged them eighteen K more to not have a zero lotline and twelve K more. To not have a twenty-two pocket. And uh, and what makes matters worse is now you look at the RPL across the street because we really like that lane home. We do, I love it as a home builder and I think it looks great, but my customers don't. It's been a fight to sell. Our RPLs this year because this in a twenty-two pocket outsells it all the time. It's only a few thou, it's twenty-seven thousand dollars more to make that jump by the time you add a garage to that uh twenty-pocket lane home. And what we find from our research from our consumers and we research them when they buy. Uh, halfway through the construction process, thirty to forty days after they move in and a year after they've owned the home. So we ask them a ton of questions and I've got probably more research than anybody in the entire industry on consumer demand. And the people that buy the stuff with the uh, especially the female customers that buy the stuff with the uh, with the lane homes and the garage and lane homes. The the females don't feel safe, they want this product. They don't want to park there, and so that's kind of where we started moving when we started developing the townhomes with the drive under eighteen-foot wide. Is because you can get them in there, you can get the, you can get the two vehicles in there.
The thirty second one?
And the females are cus, they're comfortable parking inside the unit, shutting the door and not being in the alley. So hopefully that helps with some of the product.
Thank you. Yeah, uh, Councilor Mackay, go ahead.
Yeah, so Dave, when you're building, um, I mean, we, one of the, one of the. Um, issues that we've talked about was diversity, but we also talked about affordability. You've kind of gone through the affordability in relation to the different pocket sizes. But what's the current definition of affordability, like in relation to what uh, you know, what's out there? Is it like, it's fifteen percent of what or?
Well, we kind of talk market affordability and and obviously the rates have put a lot of pressure on that. So predominantly, you know, the market seems, e- especially in Alberta with where the wages are, they don't seem to have a hard time. Buying the twenty-two-pocket zero lotline, I even have twenty. Pocket of this product, uh, zero lotline that people are buying and townhomes. They seem to get approved for that, they seem to find a way and the lenders have adapted. So we talk market affordability, um, outside of market affordability, that's a. It's kind of a, that's a, that's a, a government funding. Sort of situation and we do have programs for that, but.
Yeah, yeah, I I mean, that's kind of where I was kind of when we talked a little bit about what government calls affordability. You, are you seeing it in what you're selling or is that more would would be in more of your kind of what your apartments or your?
Uh, to be honest, all our products in Edmonton right now are doing quite well and that's because. And by Edmonton, I mean, no slight, uh, greater Edmonton area, my apologies. Uh, we are the most affordable area in the country, if not one of the top four in the world. So we have people moving from Ontario, NBC every day, taking the chance they can get a job here because of the price of this. This is. Four hundred thousand dollars less than Toronto or Vancouver or Markham. And so we are very, very affordable considering what we're doing.
Right, okay, yeah.
I don't know if I answered your question.
Yeah, no, I was trying to, I was trying to compare a little bit in relation to what the government has around it, but I don't think that always necessarily applies. I'm just saying, if we don't. I mean, if we're looking at housing diversity where you have mixed. You know, mixed product, mixed product, I don't, I mean, I, I don't know how we do that in every neighborhood without. I think, like you said, we can go into some of our older neighborhoods and you can get. Uh, you, it looks pretty standard, it looks all the same, I mean, on a fifty-foot lot, right? Um, so I'm just trying to see how we, how, I don't, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure I'm where that comes from. And it's something I'll ask administration a little later on because. I I agree with what you said, Courtney, a little bit, when we were developing the MVP, it was around being progressive. It was around being aspirational and it was around some of that and so. That, those are just comments, madam chair, not, not quite.
Kathy, do you have anything there? No, okay, I think that's all we have for you guys, thank you so much, um. Any questions of administration? Kathy, did you want to make any motions about that? You kind of talked about zero lotlines or you good?
I have a question.
We can hear you.
Sorry, um. I hate doing this like on the fly and. Maybe, I guess, um. I was, you know, I'm trying to find a balance between what administration is proposing and what um Strata already has underway and I don't want to. I don't want to completely stop what they're doing, so. Um, I was waiting for the presentation to see if, you know, if it was, if it was just an exemption for Strata or like a grandfathering of their. Their community or a wholesale change to the land use bylaw. Um. I take into account exactly what Courtney says is that we're still so new, we haven't really seen this thing. Built out completely. Um. And I don't even know how to word, um. Maintain the zero lotlines on the front driveways in a motion. I guess I might need help with that, but I think I'll probably go, go, you know what, I'm going to make motion. Mart, I'll need your help because I think we need to debate it as a council. So let's have the conversation. So not, so I have, I can't even remember how many motions I have coming up now. But hopefully somebody's keeping track.
Sure, that's great, and Councilor Hughes has a question.
Yeah, um. Say, uh, Fletcher, I'm kind of like, what's the word, Mr. Fletcher? Or you, he just put his hand up, so I wasn't sure if it was referring to that or not, but I can.
I I was, I was just going to say, you know. There's, there's the opportunity today, there's also an opportunity still to continue to make changes as part of the public hearing when it comes forward. Uh, for him, just to to set the stage, so it doesn't have to be everything stitched up today. If you want to chew on something, the public hearing provides another opportunity to amend by law for what it's working on.
Yeah, we're not, we're not limited today, this isn't our last, certainly not opportunity.
Helpful for staff if they have direction.
No, I understand.
Yeah, can I just jump in and and, because the reason that we are back at committee. Is to try to avoid some of these amendments at second reading at the public hearing. So as much as it we can do today is is, I think, better because uh. You know, I'm being very selfish, but I'm going to be cheering that piece of it and doing um, public hearing with amendments um. Might be difficult for both myself and for the ledge group, so. As much as we can do today, that would be great.
I think a question, question.
Okay, so we're going to go Council Killick and then Council Broadhead.
Oh. Thank you, uh, Chair. The uh, question I had was around what the mayor was suggesting and I'm. Uh, concerned that if we. It was brought up that Shuro, and we have a representative Jim here from Shuro as well. Um, would also. Be. Kind of captured in that. Proposed kind of concept of grandfathering, I wouldn't want to make it just. Uh. New role, panic. So.
Yeah, Councilor Killick, I was thinking about grandfathering, but I think I would rather just have a motion that says. Um. Continue the front-drive zero lotline products, I, I, you know. Obviously, that, that's something that, we don't have to get the wording exact for the bylaw, it's just direction for admin today.
Okay, as as long as it. The grandfathering concept I heard was like kind of.
Yeah, that's a good point, I forgot about Shuro, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thanks, Madam Chair, I have a question for you, uh, Mr. Anderson, uh. Build a lot of homes, I. And uh, so in your research, so what I'm hearing is that. The, the municipality is settled with sort of a post-sale ongoing. Uh. Management of the development. And and the zero lotline product lends itself to difficulties between. Uh, neighbors, people putting in. Uh, air conditioning that goes into the side yard, which is really into the neighbors. I, I, how do you respond to that? Do you have any kind of data that sort of?
Um, I think, you know, I think it's a great comment, I think, you know. Uh. Trying to date myself, twelve, fifteen years ago when we started doing zero lotline, there were a lot of questions around it. Um. But over time, we, we don't get inundated by that, it's not appearing on our surveys, it's not a concern of the customers. They understand it just like they do a party wall agreement now. Right, um, you buy your first townhome, you know, as a, as a young start, starting out and, oh, party wall agreement, what is that? This is what it is, okay. But the documents are clear now, they understand and it's only allowed on one side of the home. And often to the back is where a lot of that stuff goes, so. We don't get a lot of uh, customer calls and and confusion about that and we're good at explaining it at the point of sale. But even from the people moving from out east, they have a similar build form. They don't call it zero lotline and maybe that's bad marketing on our behalf, we've talked about that, like, term zero. You figure that one out later, but um. Even coming from out east, there, there, there's no confusion or from B C, there's no confusion in this because similar things exist throughout this country on. On this type of thing and and the limited side yard to the one side. And so they get it.
From a PDF, or there's a PDF on there, it says like zero lotline, something, something. Um, that we have in all the show homes. Um, and it illustrates. Yep. That's it, it shows how your drainage works, it shows if you scroll down how your fences work. Um, and. People bring up air conditioners, but again. Five feet on one side is still more to put an air conditioner in or walk a lawnmower through than four feet on both. Because then you'd have a fence. So it. Like it, it doesn't, it's not a game changer for most people in terms of the functionality of their side yard, they have one five-foot side yard. Instead of two four-feet side yards.
Can you explain the four feet again, is that because that's on a townhouse or a duplex?
No, a traditional lot is just your house is centered on the lot, there's four feet on either side. A zero lotline has your lot, the house is, as you can see there.
Gotcha.
It's the bottom, it's against. The lotline and then on the other side, you then have five feet, which is where your drainage goes through. Um, a lot of people wood chip a rocket. Um, and then it shows like how your fences work and make sure that you're still draining out to the front. Um, this is assuming a back-to-front drainage, but. Yeah.
I got it.
Mr. Kilo, you look like you had a comment. Any thoughts on on sort of post-experience with zeros?
To be honest with you, I, I came to the table just because I wanted to confirm we do have uh, front-attached zeros in Shuro. Uh, fourteen so far and another twenty-six that has been approved. But the ground total is only less than fifteen percent of the total number of lots. Because we do have that locational criteria, it can only have it on one side of the road. Across from a park or across from lane products, so it's still early to tell, but I think the. The provisions that were put in in that regard will probably be effective. We certainly haven't, uh, you know. Proposed them wall-to-wall, so to speak.
Yeah, all right, fair enough, and thanks for your comments, I. I can imagine that some of the ugliest things, we deal with our neighbor-on-neighbor conflict, but it happens on fifty-foot lots too, so there you go, right? Sounds, but in our first stage, sort of, um. Uh. Offering five different. Housing product types. In our next. There'll be four and three respectively, if we, without front-attached zeros, be three, two. So there's that diversity that we're working, exactly.
Okay, okay, a couple of questions, so just because I don't build as much as you guys do, okay, so I know. So when, right now, when we have the zero lotline, what you're saying is you have a requirement that there is a lane and parking on one side of the road, you're not doing zero lot on both sides, is that correct?
Right.
So is that by voluntary or is that current because our land use bylaws require?
It's in the land use bylaw, most land use bylaws have some variation of this. St. Albert currently requires um. Lane or park across from front. Um, a lot of other land use bylaws just say that you can't have front zeros across from front zeros, which. It captures more, I guess, of the issue at hand, which is just front zeros across from front zeros are a problem. But again, when you take a look at non-zeros across from non-zeros. Versus. Zeros across from lane, the net parking on that street is higher.
Yeah.
By map.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have to be brilliant to figure that one out, so yeah, I agree, so just knowing that that was helpful for me.
It is, it is in the land use bylaw and we've not asked for that to be removed.
Okay, the other question I had was, um. I'm familiar with Fort Saskatchewan a little bit right now with what they do for their product and they have like four complexes that are non condos, they have a lot of those being built out. Are we, I don't feel like we're doing that, like everything we're doing is, is, is condo-based or are we not doing that?
We do have, actually, in, in Nouveau, Dave, um, has some fee simple and we are trying to move to more fee simple. And having smaller pockets available for us. And having smaller pockets available for us would actually create a lot more opportunity for that. Um and we do see demand for it. It's just that when we're trying to juggle the density numbers. Um you can get to a higher density number on a multi-family site with your townhomes because the stipulations there are different. And on the fee simple, which is the um stuff that goes right onto the road and doesn't have condo fees, um your your smallest width is an eighteen foot pocket and you can't do that on the interior units. Because an eighteen foot garage is not allowed. So it just, it keeps it a bit bigger. Um but like there's some really fantastic fee simple stuff being done in West Edmonton. Um that is built out and fully staged and you can see it at the fourteen foot, at the twelve foot, at the eleven foot. Um and it's not condominiumized and especially the eighteen foot, you do have the two parking spots in the garage and when it's attached, two more on the driveway. So technically, that's four spots when the city requires two.
The other question, and then it's, this is just, I guess, I'm not sure whether this is, but. When I looked at like Fort Saskatchewan, for example, you can get that face simple fourplex for about three hundred and fifty thousand. But when I'm looking in St. Albert, and maybe I haven't looked at yours specifically, but the the prices seem that we're not coming anywhere near three fifty for a new home. Or or three eighty for a new home with a double detached garage on a fee simple, so what is the reasoning that we?
It's a twenty foot pocket on the interior unit, and Dave, actually, your point is just over four, isn't it?
It is now, but and that was probably my stuff in Fort Saskatchewan, you saw, because I do recall being three fifty. But I am sold out of that product, and that was older land as well, so it came on with uh lower costs. Uh for the developer, obviously passed on to me, which was passed on to the customer. But by making that two car parking only apply to twenties here, I have to be twenty uh two feet wider. Doesn't, I can't do an eighteen and a.
So what are we charging now for a fourplex fee sample um unit?
Uh between four hundred and four oh nine, I believe.
I think Juliana, when I was out there yesterday, said the last one they sold was four and four ten.
Which is helpful to have an idea of the comparison. I mean, obviously, St. Albert's worth more for land than Fort Saskatchewan. But just so I have an idea of, you know, for just a basic.
It is, but then, I mean, when you're doing an interior unit and you're building a twenty foot interior unit instead of an eighteen foot interior unit. There there is two extra feet of finishing, so it's not just the savings on the lot and the land. And that's why we wanted to show like actual final prices. Things move around in terms of the square feet, the windows, the, you know, the exterior finishing materials, all of that.
So I'm gonna just, one more question to admin, and then I think I'm done asking questions at this, but don't go anywhere yet. So um so Adrian and you guys. So we right now are doing twenty foot minimums, what I'm hearing, right, but with the encroachment or the offsetting option. And so I guess was um the feedback from Courtney about how we can't do it of a townhome. Unless it is at eight eighteen feet across in the middle, like, do we need a motion on this or because this is just new? Enlightenment, or what would be our position on that? Because I don't want to not allow a product to occur. Um because basically, we're taking out four plexes out of the out of the equation, they all have to be duplexes because they won't have that space. So I guess I'm just looking for your comments about it.
Yeah, we have a, we have a slide that we can bring up that speaks to.
Okay.
This question.
The the lot width one? Yeah, um so councillor Hughes, uh we have proposed uh lot reductions, so since we've had our conversation with uh the original draft and and where we're at today, uh we have proposed proposed lot width decreases. Um more significant, or you'll find them with the rear drive, like lane access products um ranging in and around the two foot or just over two foot mark. So we have, you know, we are looking at that maybe in the eighteen foot pocket that that U D I had had mentioned and requested, we also reduced the pocket on our our fee simple town housing, as they had kind of mentioned, um from what we're currently at to um some some of a reduction, a bit of a measured approach. We haven't gone uh to the extent necessarily that um U D I has asked fully um in some cases, but we've across the board proposed reductions for interior lot lane access products.
So what I I what I'm trying to figure out is with our current reductions, can we still do a fourplex? With a garage.
You can do a fourplex, but the fourplex will have units that are wider than what you're comparing them to in Fort Saskatchewan. And the cost.
Because that garage at eighteen feet has to be, you have to let it park two cars. Right now, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, it says that eighteen feet is not two car. So I think again, we're telling the customer, we include an F one fifty in the two car. So if you take that out of it, make eighteen a two car. Then then you can get a cost affordable for the market again.
Thank you. I have no idea to go without. Yeah.
So just on that um side of a few on that.
Yeah, just a, just a follow up. Uh so we haven't shared this with history yet, but in terms of the fee sample old townhomes. Uh we are proposing to go down to a sixteen foot building pocket, which would be that four point nine meter interior unit. Um but we we assume that those would be built with a tandem garage.
And that's something we haven't done. Um. I guess when you say tandem garage, I mean, it does apply to when the garage is attached. And then you just have the driveway, whereas in other municipalities. There's just no rule in other municipalities that says you must have two car and eighteen is not a two car, twenty is the smallest. It's in other municipalities, it's left to us and and the homeowner. To how many cars they consider whatever configuration we've put together in terms of parking.
Are we allowing the garages to be attached? Like it's like we have row housing and then we'd have row garages. Are we allowing that in the current or the proposed? Or do they could be standalone for the garages? So that would be up to the builder's design, as long as they meet the land use bylaw requirement of the two two legal parking stalls per dwelling unit. Um and I think in the first previous scale, we kind of gave some opportunities. They could do it tandem, they could do a single with a hat of like a carport, they could do it attached, detached, as long as the the requirement for the parking meets the criteria of two legal stalls. That would be fine, whether attached or detached coming off the lane.
All of those iterations, though, are also allowed in Edmonton. And zero people use any of those iterations other than. Like I won't say every single because I have not been to every single eighteen foot pocket, but there's either just a parking pad, or if somebody is building a garage. And Jim, I don't know if you've seen anything else, it's always eighteen. No one does a tandem. No one does a single with a pad beside it. It is a hundred percent open to them. They can make that choice. Based on, you know, their value to cost ratio on that, and no one ever chooses that.
Just for questions.
Could I just add to that?
So we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep going unless we've got a question for you. Okay. So sorry, we appreciate you being here. You answer good questions. Any any more questions of administration? No. Okay, so more, uh we've got kind of a stack of motions that we want to get through. How would you like us to structure that?
So just let us know who's doing the motions versus mayor Herons. We got those ones kind of queued up, and then we have for councillor Killick. So that's four, we have four ready. Maybe we'll start by showing them on screen.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's pull up um. And one at a time is best, whichever one you first just let us know.
Lots of times, we have these discussions when we when we present motions a little on the fly. I realize we've had some background material. A lot of times we make motions and then we just don't have the all the background information of the impacts, and you talked about it, and you'd like to hear me say it. Uh the unintended consequences, so I hear something today and I hear a motion, but then I don't know all of the details other than what the conversation was around the table.
Martin's kind of addressed this in the motion.
Exactly for that point.
I I wanna, I just wanna raise it so that we're aware.
Yes.
Because like I I I hate doing things on the fly because we get tripped up.
Yes, so this isn't prescriptive.
So essentially, if this motion passed, administration would take the idea away. And look at the possibility of adding it in and bring that information back for first reading.
Okay.
For the public here.
I think it speaks quite to what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I just, like, we've had a lot of information, like, I'm not even ill and my head's exploding. And uh and and so I I just want to make sure we get this right, and we get, I I I would like more opportunity to hear. Like if U D I has some actual statements, I would like to actually hear them in a formal presentation. Versus yeah, something that's not on the fly. You did very well. You did really well.
Well, and that'll be great for for the public hearing.
Yeah, and and that's my point. That's okay. So I I appreciate, I appreciate administration's uh.
So Mayor Heron, this first motion, that works for you?
It does, yeah.
And what?
Wouldn't it be continuing zero lot lines as opposed to enabling? Because we're.
That's a good point, yeah.
Continuing.
It's a new district, so that's why it's enabling, because it didn't.
So this one's good. Let's go, let's look at all of them.
I mean, if if you want it to. I'm not sure. Um Mayor Heron wants us to change it.
Do you want us to add front uh mayor, or are you okay with just kind of leaving it open and administration knows where we're going with this?
No, I think, sorry, I think it should say front, um because it sounds like the rear is already included, so to be specific.
Great.
Front drive, I guess, right?
Okay, let's look at the next motion.
Do you want to do these one off, or are you gonna do the nomina?
No, we'll do the, we'll do the one. Do you guys just want to go this one and then we can wordsmith the next one if we need to?
Yeah, I think that's better.
All right, okay, you've got the floor, Mayor.
Okay, you're gonna have to all forgive me because I am not feeling well, and so my arguments might be as incoherent as my thoughts. But um I my my couple of thoughts around the front drive zero lot lines are. They are new in St. Albert, and we haven't seen the full build out of even one community with them. Um the affordability question, I I do um, I do listen to administration and and agree with them, and I've had conversations with Courtney about this. But the first few uh front drives zero lot lines that were introduced in St. Albert were show homes, and they were exhibiting. You know, the highest end of what you could do, but I think it was demonstrated during Dave's presentation that eighteen thousand dollars savings on a lot, it does go a long way. So I think um from affordability point of view, um and from a new product in St. Albert point of view, I think we need to continue this and um see where it goes because we as a council need to be very proactive in allowing that diversity of homes that will allow homeownership for that first time buyer. Um you know, the more affordability for a young family, et cetera. I think this is still a product that we need to keep in our land use bylaw.
Thank you, councillor Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and uh thanks for the motion. Uh certainly would uh support this motion, uh however, as as administration considers how they're going to uh present this or re or or give council information on the implications of this motion. I personally would like a a legal opinion on on whether or not the requirement to put amenities or additions such as a air conditioner can be legally enforced into the backyard as opposed to into the side yard. Can they sign off and then be legally bound to do that? You know what I mean? Right?
And and just.
We're we'll we'll keep going. Are you good? Are you good, councillor Broadhead?
Yes, thank you.
Councillor Kai, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just want to add my two cents, and thanks for bringing this forward, because I think we still need a little clarity. Sorry, yeah, and you bring the dog up, but that's. Uh anyway, so I I I, you know, I I think the point is is that we're we're just so new in relation to that, and I I get the Nouveau and the new, I get the, I get the, I get the linkages there. But I I would love to see this thing go forward, like I just, I was telling others and I was telling Dave and Courtney, I drove through there on Sunday to Nouveau. And it's starting to look, it looked good, and I really liked the fact that a lot of the homes are starting to see. You can actually see young families because of the actual play equipment that's in the front, so I'm assuming it's young families, but you can actually start to see what uh is available, and I I just think it's a little premature to to limit it right now, and I actually think that it has the unintended consequence of of limiting diversity, because we can see it in in some of the comments that we're seeing in Shro, because we're starting to limit house product. So I want, I want to make sure that we don't actually limit it, and I want to make, I want to see if this can actually work in our community. For all the reasons that we need to have a diversity of housing, so. I like what I'm seeing so far.
Anyone else?
Um my only comments are, I'm I'm supporting this because I would like to see more information, um but I don't know how I'm gonna vote, kind of whenever recommendations come to us, so so throw that out there. Um Mayor, anything else to close?
Nothing, no.
A call for the vote. We'll wait for Mayor to vote this time.
River says yes.
Yeah, Rivers, Rivers is a favor.
So that is carried.
That dog is growing like a foot an hour.
Next motion. What's the next motion?
Hey, so how how do you feel about this motion, Mayor?
Uh. Oh, I like the word substantially. Yeah, whatever, I I'd like to see um what they would propose, so thank you for putting that together, and I think sounds like our administration is is very excited to do this kind of work, so whatever you guys propose, I will be. Nope, dogs fighting. Sorry, uh I don't have much to add to that. This is was proposed by admin, I believe, so.
Thank you. Anyone else on this?
I just, just one comment, the substantially word jumps out at me too, so I wouldn't support it as worded.
Councillor Hughes?
Yeah, I I'm concerned with the word substantially. We're already reducing requirements, and so a further reduction is one thing. But then there's just also, I realize that not as many people have cars, but still lots do, and then the overflow just starts spilling into other neighborhoods, and then it starts causing complaints from people who live next to affordable housing, because it's impacting their their own standard of living, and what we don't want is the uh is a reduction where it actually starts to have people complaining about having affordable housing near their properties and and then having a justification, because they're saying that it's the parking is impacting them. And uh so the word substantially is where I'm having an issue.
I I'll I'll jump in if these guys aren't gonna jump in. I'm a- again, I'm happy with the wording because this is not a final direction. I want to see what this looks like. Um I know that administration has been pretty cautious, even in terms of um, you know, four plexes and things like that, and I suspect that they'll apply that same caution to this kind of recommendation. Um so I I'm happy to support it because we're not at the end stage, and and I just want to see what this looks like.
I I realize we're in a debate, but to to me, that absolutely is direction. I I think we need to say consider substantial reductions. Otherwise, that's telling us to substantially reduce the market.
Do you want to change that, Kathy, at all, to make it like the previous motion?
Sure, that's fine. And quite honestly, um if it if it helps this pass um through committee, um I don't care if the word substantially is there or not, just I just want to make sure we're having the.
Consider substantially reduce.
It could say that administration consider reducing parking requirements to encourage our enable affordable housing. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, you're happy, you're happy with that, Mayor?
Because it's it it's wording, it means nothing, as you had said, Natalie, so just want to make sure this passes.
Thank you. So uh if there's nothing else, I will call for the vote. That carries. Excellent. Next up. How do you feel about that, Mayor?
Looks good.
Hey, any comments?
Not really.
Anyone else? Call for the votes. That's an easy one.
I'm a no.
Okay, so that carries. And next one, Council Killick, how do you feel about that? Or do you want this one to be prescriptive?
I, I honestly would like this one to be more prescriptive. I, uh,
So that administration removed main floor residential?
Yeah. And, and it does include with the, with an exception for the affordable housing product, so I'm, I think it covers both issues, but I on, on all of the discussion we've had down around downtown vibrancy and what, you know, attracting business and one business needs another business, all of those things that I said in, in the, the original comments. Uh, lead me to strongly believe that need to maintain that ground floor walk-in for businesses and we'll have residential above that. But, but that sidewalk level uh, use is, is best used in our downtown to, through, through, uh, business use and I would hate to lose that, you know, with, with a maybe the exception or exemption for the, for affordable housing product. If somebody built a you know, an affordable housing building and they just said, hey, we need to have ground floor residential, that would be one, the one exception, but everything else should be, uh, supporting our, our downtown businesses.
Before, we have stuff to.
Yes, go ahead, Jean.
Um, thank you. No, I won't be supporting this. Um, I, I would like to see us have a plethora of so much development that we have to start putting in restrictions about what can be in there. Since DARP has come into play, there's been very little development in there. Um, and the questions are now coming into why. I personally think the height is an issue, but I also think that just saying that they can't put something in there, it has to be commercial. Uh, limits the ability for the developer to actually sell their product. And as a result, then they just, if they don't have the guarantees of what they can actually sell, they don't build. I mean, there's a lot of money that goes into a high rise. So, um, I think that the fewer restrictions we have, the better. And if we have a plethora of them and we become so successful that we cannot possibly manage it, then we'll come back and say, you know what, we're gonna put restrictions going forward. But until we actually have that problem of overwhelming success, I think that we should try to figure out how we can actually materialize, uh, development down there. And removing restrictions, I think is, uh, I think that's a good suggestion, by the way.
Okay, Council McCuy?
Yeah, I agree actually with the last comments by Council Hughes and, and not to disagree with Council Killick, but I think this is a chicken and egg argument where we have around attracting people into our, into our downtown. And I can see like, we already have Richmond House downtown, we already have Bron, Bron Place downtown and those are primary residential. Uh, we're talking about the, maybe the ability, wouldn't it be interesting if you could combine a retirement community with the, um, um, community hall? Or something like that where, uh, I, I look at Edmonton, Hundred and Fourth Street has a lot of businesses, restaurants, um, but they also have condo development. So I think I wouldn't want to put a, 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 just an all out stop on this without having some more discussion. And I think really, I, I'm with, uh, Council Hughes, I'd rather see, I would rather see what development actually comes and brings to us and then we can have that conversation. But to me, it's a chicken and egg. We need people downtown. But they need places to live down now. So I, I, I just, I, I just don't want to, I just don't want to be something where we're just this prescriptive of say remove. I want to see what it could actually look like.
Council McCuy, then.
Thank you. Uh, last comment, I'm agreeing with Council Hughes and Council Miss, um, McCuy in being too prescriptive. Uh, in fact, I remember years back living in a high-rise condo and we didn't want to live above a business, you know, and the noise and a lot of people look at it that way, or they don't want to enter their building through a business to live there. So there's both sides to that argument and I'd like to see the, the public dictate where they'd like to live and not necessarily be forced above a business.
Well, I actually like this, uh, motion, um, at the exception for affordable housing products, I, I, I understand that one, uh, and I think the, uh, the factor that swing my vote to support this is the comments that we had from our economic development people earlier. It's not about businesses not wanting to come, it's, they don't have to build. So, uh, I, personally, I think our downtown is languished on the vine simply because we we as a community haven't invested in it. Now, you can say that there's lots of reasons why. And for sure. But, uh, you know, if, if downtown means something to us, then we as a community need to invest in. That's why what's gonna come up next week is so important to me because I think that will transform how we live and view our downtown. And whether or not we allow business on the main floor or whether we don't, it, it, it's beside the point. If it's built and it's coming, then the businesses will be there because that's what we heard from our economic. So anyway, I'm gonna support you, Council Killick.
Okay, Mayor Herron.
I'm just, I'm, I'm supportive of keeping the main floor for retail, um. But you, you'll have a dead downtown if you have doctor's offices and lawyers closed at five o'clock and there's nothing to attract that window shopping type atmosphere or restaurants. So, um, I, in as usual, Council Broadhead's set it very well that we have to make those investments in the downtown, which we haven't done in many years. And so much is happening currently in the downtown with the, with the potential of William and then of course the Downtown Business Association. I think we need to, um, stick to our original, um, stick to our guns and, and try to keep the retail on the main floor. Thanks.
Dude, um, so I am passionately opposed to this. Um, really love the idea of main floor, um, residential, it increases that diversity that we're looking for. It has people downtown. Right now, if you go downtown at five o'clock on a Tuesday, it is a ghost town. Um, if people are living downtown, it's, it's just more people who can go to the coffee shop, go to the restaurant, you know, whatever they need to do. Um, when I travel, the, the best kinds of downtowns, the most fiber bound downtowns are the ones that, that allow this product. So I would love to see that here. When I lived in Christchurch, um, this is the product we saw for anyone who was in FCM at, in Halifax, in Quebec City. Um, these products existed there and they're beautiful. It's such a, such a nice, uh, way to live. Um, kind of the comments about DARP. Um, DARP is not working in terms of creating vibrancy downtown. It's not, so it's time to do something different. Um, and one of the other exciting, um, parts of allowing this kind of product downtown is I could absolutely see home businesses, um, in these types of products. You know, you have your little main floor townhome, you can have your sign with, you know, Adrian's Nail Salon. Um, Adrian can do the nails during the day, he can go out to the coffee shop in the evening. I think that's fantastic. Um, would love to see that downtown. And for me personally, the only way I would live downtown is if this product is available. So Adrian doesn't like that idea, but that's okay. Um, so, so those are, those are my comments, um, on this one. You have anything to close?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I, I, my observation from some of the comments would be that uh, let's give it a try. And we have limited real estate downtown. We, we don't have a huge downtown. So uh, reserving this ground floor space for businesses is, uh, a way that it supports other businesses. If, if we, as, uh, one councillor said, can it give it a try? Uh, and then, and if we see it doesn't work, then we can rein it in. It'll be too late. Uh, the, the, the reserving or preserving of main floor for businesses uh, is it, it absolutely, I, I, I think that the right way to go. If, if we let it grow, the, it will be a death blow to the downtown. We will have people living there with ground floor access. But they won't want to live there because there's nothing else there. There's nothing else on the ground floor of of businesses. There won't be the coffee shop to go to. You, you can have, you can live on the ground floor um, and have access out to the sidewalk, but where are you gonna go? You're not, you're not gonna go anywhere because there's nothing there. There's no, there's no coffee shop, there's no, there's no you know, massage shop, there's no nail shop, there's no hairdresser, there's no n- none of those businesses on the, the bakery, the restaurant, the, the, the bar, the, the, you know, all of those businesses that are ground floor oriented uh, or walk-in business traffic will, won't be there. And i- if we allow it uh, and then say, oh, well, we might change it in a year or two or three if it were, if it's super successful. The point is that if it's super, super successful, the space will be gone. And we'll never get it back. We'll never be able to say it should have, oh man, we wish we'd have retained that, that ground floor walk-in for business. It'll be too late. And I, the examples I've given of, of, uh, you know, ground floor burger shack or whatever there they need more people living downtown. So I see this as a combination of retaining ground floor, uh, commercial, uh, for all of those businesses we've listed and many more. Uh, but with residential above and, and it's just, it, I think we should retain that and, uh, have it very clearly stated for future development. If we're gonna invest in the B I A, I think they're, they're saying they're gonna work hard to bring businesses downtown. This flies in the face of, of doing that. Their businesses will uh, all of our restaurants, et cetera, it, it just will seems counterintuitive to what we've been trying to discuss uh, and, and bring about for all this time. So that's why I, I brought this, uh, forward.
Thank you. Call for the vote. Okay, fails. And I think that's our last one. Um, apart from the big one. Anything else? Okay, did you want us to do that last one that accept this information or no? So we're good to go? Okay.
We have lunch just arrived.
We have lunch. Okay, so we're gonna break break for lunch back here, uh, in thirty minutes.
All right, are we back?
Roland.
Yes, sure.
We're back?
Yep.
Louise, you've got a seven-page presentation for us currently.
Good afternoon, council. I'm just gonna share my screen.
After you're looking so much better this afternoon than this morning.
To get to my presentation. Again, good afternoon. So the reason we are here is to, because councillor Hughes had presented a motion on June 6th. And that administration provided a report by Q2 of 2024, which is today outlining the costs and potential location timeline and other considerations to establish a take it or leave it facility using the Strathcona County hodgepodge lodge model as a starter. So waste and diversion, which ultimately is decreasing the materials going to landfill, is obviously an important goal for much of the region, many of the municipalities around the region. And upcycling is one way to achieve this diversion and contribute to that goal. Both Strathcona and Edmonton are neighbors have created facilities to accept this upcycling that the community wants to donate. And these are intended to be items that couldn't go to charity or to recycling. But they're intended for the public use, one-offs, that type of things that still have life in them. People, they don't deserve to be in the landfill, but they aren't necessarily suitable for a business like Goodwill. So we, in the absence of this kind of facility, the city of St. Albert, what our program does is we help residents divert waste through some of our different events, the large item drop-off and pickup. We now accept textile materials at Mike Mitchell. And then Mike Mitchell again can host a variety of different types of recyclable household materials that can be diverted from the landfill. So Hodgepodge Lodge in particular is located at the Broadview Enviro Service Station within Sherwood Park. It began in 2018 and ultimately started as plant pots hanging on chain link fence. It then moved to a table, it moved to a portable carport and evolved into what it is today, which is a 1,500 square foot building, indoor building with a secure outside fence storage area and parking. So it is open and Edmonton has similar hours, 40 hours per week. Only Wednesday to Sunday, closed Monday and Tuesday. They have one full-time staff onsite at all times and approximately 40 volunteers help run this in two-hour shifts over the course of a week. The reuse center in Edmonton is a very similar model, ultimately the same timeframes as well. When material comes in, there's a weigh scale, you weigh it in. You're right, do you record your amount that it is and then you leave it for others? Or if you're removing things because you found an item you want, you weigh it out. And thereby by this in-out weighing, we can determine how much is actually being diverted from a landfill. The Edmonton Centre is, the main centre is on Argyle Road, it's a massive facility. Where ultimately the four eco-stations have individual drop-off areas and then they feed this massive complex in Edmonton on Argyle Road just south of Bonneville. So the actual cost to build this facility in St. Albert using current numbers that we have right now is approximately 977,000 to establish the building and the space, the outdoor space and the parking. There'd be about $65,000 worth of annual cost, which is waste disposal. The Strathcona, the Hodgepodge Lodge facility empties a 10-yard garbage bin twice a week with materials that people have donated with good intention, but that are just not suitable or not functional. So they get disposed of and they are emptying a cardboard bin daily from the actual boxes that the items are brought in on. So that kind of costs are about 65,000. Staffing, there is a municipal staff present at all times that this facility is open. Approximately 70,000 to 90,000, it would depend on whether or not this is a QP position or a non-QP position. It would depend on what we were looking for. So total is about 977,000 per build, does not include land and about 135,000 in annual operating costs. Just for reference to the staff, the FTE that would be on site. Strathcona was quite adamant this staff needed to be there because they organize train, they support the volunteers, they deal with the public, which can actually take a fair amount of time and resolve concerns. There's sometimes a bit of fighting over items, what can go where. So that's what the staff does. So both Edmonton and Strathcona have these types of facilities. They are located in much larger Enviro Service facilities, so they are a full-service recycled center. Edmonton has four main ones located in different quadrants of the city and Strathconas is quite large as well. The Mike Mitchell Centre is our version of this and it is about a quarter of the size of the Broadview Enviro Centre station and Hodgepodge Lodge takes up about a quarter of it. So Mike Mitchell is really quite small and then there's limited parking because of it being in the industrial area and being located next to Jackcraft where there is a huge amount of seasonal staff that tend to use the street parking. So at these Enviro Service stations, they're one-stop shop facilities. People can dispose of upcycling material, they can dispose of garbage, they can dispose of large items, hazardous material, brush, yard waste, they're all one-stop shops as opposed to having to go to multiple facilities, like for us, we need to use the compost depot for yard waste or Mike Mitchell for household products. So where we're going with this is we actually don't have the space right now with what we have. We do have things in the future, there's a new facility proposed. It's within the 10-year plan, the Public Works Satellite Yard is tentatively located or proposed at Badger Lands on the north section. The compost depot will have to move because of its location right off Villeneuve Road, so that's going to need to move as well. So potentially we could locate an upcycle facility or take it or leave it facility in our, in potentially a new site. So looking at this, on the top left is a new Enviro Service Station that for Saskatchewan built. Just below that is a colored map as to what they can put there. There's a weigh scale going in, items are, your vehicle is weighed, similar to Edmonton. You dispose of whatever items you were, there's recycling, there is yard waste, there's brush bins, there is the upcycle facility, there is all sorts there and it is attached to their local public services yard, so it's a very integrated facility. On the top left is, or top right, sorry, is Strathconas. So up here, this little small corner here is what the Hodgepodge Lodge is. So vehicles would enter in from the road, they drive in, they actually pass Hodgepodge Lodge to access the rest of the Enviro Service Station. And then they have nine parking stalls out front.
Here is now, Trevor.
I can hear you now, yeah, I was muted.
Thank you.
So no, no problem. So the bottom is the city of Edmonton type facility, very similar to for Saskatchewan's and Strathconas where it's a one-stop shop, regardless of what you're bringing, you have an opportunity to dispose of it on that site. Speaking of the future, this is some potential proposals of what could occur on the north section of Badger Lands when Fowler Way comes through. Right now, the current compost depot is down here and because this land use is proposed for potentially other uses, getting it up, attaching it to a potential satellite yard, making the utilities, de-watering station that they have now part of it. We could create quite a large Enviro Service type facility, make it a destination for residents and a one-stop shop for everything. So that potentially in the future is an option. And that's it. So the recommendation was to just accept this as a report, but we're happy to take any questions. There's myself, there's John Potter, who is the manager of transportation operations and waste diversion and Tim Saunders, the directors of Beok.
We'll start it off with councillor Hughes.
Sure, thank you. So I know that Goodwill approached us, sent us, or sent me, and I sent forwarded to everybody many months ago saying that they were willing to partner with us. So I'm going, did we pursue that and ultimately why was this not recommended?
So we did, yes, they did approach. So they're in the old Rona location up on the north side and they offered their lumber storage area. In speaking with Strathcona and some of our other partners in the region, they were adamant that this was not a good idea because you'd be favoring one company over another. So even just our textile bin that we have located in Mike Mitchell, Salvation Army challenged Goodwill's right to even be there. So there's a number of nonprofit agencies that all want to be a part of that. And by going into one of the nonprofits, while it actually may increase our access to volunteers, it would, we can't control what products then necessarily come in or out of the nonprofit. They may find something that they think they can sell, we would have a hard time controlling that. And the optics of it in talking with the Strathcorner people, they didn't think it was a good idea at all.
What I'm wondering, this is where I'm having the struggle, is that I'm not debating whether or not Mike Mitchell is too small, it's too small, like it's just, that's just a fact, the land is not that big. I'm just trying to figure out what way we can do even a more limited capacity, limited hours, like fewer items agreed to location as an intermediary. Whether, it doesn't have to be Goodwill, but if there was some other, because when they started, they didn't start with their 1,500 square foot facility, started and then moved up, right? And so I think that it would be easier to justify moving up once you actually saw success in this and we could determine what the uptake would be. And I know that the uptake is pretty to be strong. But that's also that means that the community wants it. So I'm trying to figure out if there's some way, and that's what I don't see in this report, is like there must be other avenues that we pursued that might be a stepping towards it because that Public Works facility is going to be years away.
Yeah, and we certainly did talk about that. So if trying to find land that could accommodate this, that it could be a 12-month operation, we think it'd be exceptionally popular. I think it would, even the full-size facility, I think even Strathconas now is completely undersized, they need to grow bigger. We do think it would work if we piloted it somewhere. The land that we had identified as possibility, we couldn't necessarily have 12 months a year. There was sections of service place parking lot, Jerome McGinnla, all these things are actually needed in the winter. And so we couldn't identify land where that was serviced because you're gonna have to provide a facility for the people, allow them to park somewhere, have washrooms either onsite or very close by. And then provide heating and secure storage for 12 months a year. We were troubled, we struggled to identify city land that could accommodate that for 12 months. There was certainly
I'm just brainstorming here, but like even like there's a vacancy in service place that's been there for a while, I know we're trying to fill it, but like have we looked at even patients that we just had vacancy within land that we currently already owned and said this would be like a storefront that would be not necessarily exactly like Hodgepodge Lodge, but potentially a variation of it in a longer capacity. I know that the motion didn't give you like gratitude beyond all measure, but I'm just as a, trying to troubleshoot how we could actually make this, was that just explored at all or?
We certainly didn't explore options within service place. Rental revenue, we did not go down there. We were looking for outside space because we need an outside component and potentially a trailer rental. And then having washrooms close by, being able to service the trailer. And then having washrooms close by, be able to service the trailer. And where could we locate that that could be longer than, you know, eight months and we
Then the other thing, I again, I should have had maybe had the motion be broad at the time of. But like if I look at like uh the media services of the food bank area, they've got a large parking lot there. So and they also have access to volunteers. So because I, to me, the biggest hurdle is actually getting the volunteers. Like the building is one hurdle, but then it's like manning the volunteers is a difference because the city's not a volunteer based organization. So um finding that and then organizing that level of volunteers is the second issue. So I guess was there any looking into potential for partnerships with other community organizations that may actually like we would pay their F T E like sort of we've done other partnerships where they've managed different programs for us. And I know that wasn't specifically in the motion, but has that was that explored or not? Guess because I'm just asking I'm wondering if we needed to go back into this further or if you've already covered that.
We didn't look into partnerships with different community groups at all. No, we didn't. Um we looked as if this would be a program we run because ultimately in the future we see it being part of our Enviro Service Station. Um the the sites we did look at were um and this is on the map, it it'd be hard to read, but we we even talked about Alexia Field in the big parking lot by the rodeo grounds. Um we talked about service place just north of the church, service place north of where Dodger Dog uh dog park is now, although that parking lot is getting quite full because Dodgers becoming very popular. And Jerome McGinn like connects where it was a nice paved surface. We could put this facility, but no, we didn't talk to community groups like the food bank, no.
I haven't talked to them either, so I have no idea about their level of even remote interest. I guess because this is just to take this information, which in many ways is to sort of let me put this to rest. Um so I'm gonna do one other thing about the the capital fund, but um if they were to approach us and say, because if they see this in the paper and they're like, oh, we would be willing to try to partnership with, I guess, are we open to that concept or I guess or is it gonna have to be a council motion at the, or maybe a council motion, but I guess would there be discussions or are we just really gonna focus on delivering it? Ourselves? I I don't really know where to go with this. It's because I'm just
You know, we we use Hodge Podge Lodge as the the um where we feel that anything smaller is probably going to be too small. We we could, we could do it. There then we know it would be successful. Um so if we went away and looked at those type of alternatives with food bank, we could definitely do that. We're not uh opposed to that. Uh the the issue is but there will come a time very quickly that we will run out of of so we are proposing that, you know, it become part of a more integrated service offering in a city-owned Badger Land, something along those lines, which are coming forward here in next year two on the capital plan. Um but in the interim, it's not saying that nothing would happen in the interim, however, it is going to be too small.
Yeah, I know it will quickly be. Uh the thing what we'll have to do is simply limit, how about we take? And so it's like Hodge Podge likes everything and maybe we'll say we're only taking these categories of items because this is all the space we have, which is still better than nothing. Um because I'll tell you, like they took everything. You you've been in there, Louise, I'm sure. It's like they they take everything. There's nothing off the books here. They've got a hundred and fifty universal remotes in case someone needs. So um okay, so the the thing I'm wondering too is so this again is for information and I don't see it added to the capital plan. And so the two things that so it's coming forward next budget, right, for the planning, but when is the plan to actually build it and finish it out?
Believe there was twenty twenty six with some. So we've got a number of different initiatives. There is the satellite yard, there's also the composting, there is the de-water facility that utilities is going to be looking at as well. So we're looking to align them for efficiencies, obviously, but I believe the first one is going to be coming this fall. So we could actually write in that charter. Possibly include this into this coming year's charter.
Yeah, there there's the A S P and then there's the bespoke discussion on the Badger Lands of which this is a component of that discussion.
So I guess does it need a council motion to include that or because I mean this was just, or is it just like we can put that somehow in there as a consideration?
Believe we need a council motion. Do I stand incorrect? And I think it's uh now on the radar as a consideration.
Okay, I'm just trying to
Anything I would just share, just um you know, council's interpretation of the budget taxation guiding principles. So first council has to motion to add something to the plan. Now we're not, he's talking about adding scope to an existing charter, so whether you feel that's adding to the plan, then it would probably be good to have a motion on, but say we bring that you add the scope to that existing charter.
Yeah, and I'm willing to put forward that motion. I'm looking at sure enough. At the X item, we can increase that scope.
Yeah, okay.
Because that's whatever the wording is for this little item. I'm not sure if except wording is for that little item. Um because I I would like just to have it not be lost. It's easy to forget it, especially as, you know. I'd forget what I ate for breakfast yesterday, so it's hard to remember specifically about this little thing. So um okay, so that was the other one. And then because basically you're saying you're looking for an actual building because even the like the occasional little fire hall, we tore it down because there's no building there. That's where we're stuck, right? Like if we hadn't tore it down, then actually might have been an option.
There is a lot of benefit to having it integrated with the like Mike Mitchell would be ideal because we have the the immediate disposal. So there's a lot of efficiencies that we've gained and ultimately the operational cost will be decreased if we can incorporate it into an integrated facility.
Yeah, I and I know the ideal. I'm just trying to figure out if we can somehow hopscotch it a little bit. That's all because um I know that when I went to the Hodge Podge and just kind of council, but like they said it's really great that it was beside the recycling because they were moving product back and forth to the recycling for the items they couldn't have. So certainly it is more efficient. It's just that our spot is just is tiny, right? You know, so um.
And then it's a one stop shop for residents too. They can bring multiple items. They they did say it's a huge benefit. Both Edmonton said that as well, being part of a larger facility.
Do we know how much, when I was there, do you know how much in twenty twenty three they diverted for waste in general in Hodge Podge or when you did the reporter?
Well, I off the top of my head, I don't.
Yeah, I think they were at a hundred thousand pounds by June, so it was a a lot of poundage that didn't have to hit the landfill for sure.
When they're full or they uh it's just an unacceptable item, then it gets removed twice a week. They'll go through things. If something sat there for six months and they need the space, then they will slowly remove items and replace them.
Okay, thank you. That's a question.
And I'm not sure if this goes to administration or the councillor Hughes, but one of one of the questions I have in my mind is that we have a very active upcycling immunity on Facebook um already. I I I was surprised, just a quick little survey of we have upside, we have at least eight that I know of. There's probably more. Upcycle St. Albert, upcycling in St. Albert, upcycling Brandon, St. Albert, St. Albert Free Cycle, St. Albert and area free stuff. Real St. Albert free items. Uh the best one I like is St. Albert, Hornville, Mom and Pop Swap Trade and Free Stuff.
That's a wrong site.
And then uh and then buy and sell free, free trade. Um and and that's just eight that I know of. There's probably
Councillor Councillor Kellogg, I'm gonna be a troublemaker and ask you if you have a question of administration or councillor.
And so we're so the councillor Hughes, I guess. Wh- where do we see this fitting in different than all of these other ways to do upcycling, free cycling, reuse, keeping stuff by the landfill?
So when I um and you can, I mean Louise, you've seen it as well. Um the value that they have in there is these are items that are not easily put up and don't like upcycling. Like sometimes it's like I have a hundred and fifty margarine containers. If you put that into upcycling, it's going to be very few takers. But like often the schools need them for crafts and so they can go there and just wipe them out of like margarine lids or margarine containers or bread ties, like your bread baskets where you're just like, I didn't no, I could keep it, but someone's found some use for it. And it's things that are often not put onto those Facebook groups. Because Facebook groups, when you're putting it, it is still an effort to get rid of one item. And here you can get rid of a whole slew of them that you're really, you can't really sell and people were looking for it. You're thinking, no one wants this thing. And then you go there and someone's like, I've taken it. And so it's it's just an easier way to get rid of a lot of items we wouldn't otherwise get rid of and it still have a use for them. That's where it is. Yeah.
And just to add to that, we're not trying to compete with these sites. The more diversion we can get, fabulous. So however many avenues it takes. This is great. And Strathcona is the same way. They have a number of different sites. What you sometimes see on upcycle is people wanting something and the response will be, oh, I saw that at Hodge Podge Lodge. But right, so
So the the free cycle sites is a question then, but they they have a capability to put in in search of. Uh I I want all these craft items and I see teachers doing that all the time on site, so I'm just trying to in my mind figure out what trying to fill by by taking this on as a service level level for the city, I
And I think in Strathcona, because it evolved very much through the public and it evolved that they had such a group focused on on having success of just trading plant pots. And then they grew it, that the community was bought in from minute one into this and they have really helped push this.
Yeah, and and you can go there yourself and you can drop off stuff yourself. So if you have stuff that you're like, I didn't know what I'm gonna do with this extra container I got from the dollar store. You can bring it and they'll take it. There's not limited just to uh rest of town residents. Once you're, when I first heard about it, I thought, okay, whatever. And then I went there and I was like, this is really impressive. What they've done with things that most people would think I have no use for this, it's gonna have to go in the garbage. And they're like, no, no, no. And and the thing is, the stuff flies off the shelves. So it the fact that they're able to transfer this much goods and we can materialize it, that's the thing. So that that's where it's like, as you said, it's more than one avenue, but there's certainly a demand for this. Um if there wasn't, they would not see the success. They're seeing both in Edmonton and Strathcona.
And uh what Strathcona does a little bit, but what they want to expand to is have a community classroom. And Edmonton does this as well, where they bring in members of the community and teach them how to build things with some of the recycled goods.
I and like they bring in schools and stuff as well right now and they they have a a whole thing. And again, it's really, really popular with them just to be able to look at things differently and then say, how can we reuse them? So I know that the staff there were extremely passionate about it and I think that if this were to come here, it would it would be so well received. But just go and once you're there for ten minutes, we'll be like, oh, a lot of stuff here I don't want, but somebody else apparently does. So I can respect it.
Councillor Hughes, I'm not seeing anyone else asking questions. Do you want to make the recommended motion?
Yes, I know.
Okay.
So that they generate report take a title, take it or leave it facility dated April ninth, receive this information.
Okay, I'll have call for the vote. There, Heron, you there? She is in favor. Let's carry. Ten year capital growth plan updates.
Yeah, I'm just gonna share my screen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So good afternoon. I'm here today to present administration's recommendations for updates to the ten year growth plan. The ten year growth capital plan is a long term planning tool that provides key strategic inputs for the upcoming budget year. A framework for the three of the budget plan and a future outlook of long range capital requirements. This agenda item before committee today in response to standard twelve of the budget and taxation guiding principles policy, which reads, oops. With specific reference to the municipal ten year growth capital plan. A council motion is required to add or remove a capital project charter to or from the plan. For the twenty twenty five to twenty thirty four capital plan, administration is recommending one growth initiative be added and one be removed. It is important to note that this process is only for approval of amendments to the ten year municipal growth plan. As the estimated funding for the next nine years will not be sufficient to undertake all growth initiatives on the plan. Administration will bring forward funding recommendations guided by the capital prioritization matrix. When the revised twenty twenty five to thirty four municipal growth plan is presented to council as part of the twenty five to twenty seven business plan and budget. So administration is recommending the inclusion of a municipal area network or MAN to the plan. The city's MAN provides a secure and unlimited communication between city facilities. To build resiliency, redundant paths are required so that if one side of the ring is broken, communication can continue uninterrupted on the other side. Funding for MAN has been provided in twenty twenty two, twenty three and twenty four to create redundant rings to connect city facilities. But this project focuses on secondary redundant fiber connections for fire hall floor and both primary and secondary fiber network connections to city use utilities, facilities in the northeast servicing area. The funds are required as while construction projects for new facilities include a primary man connection to the nearest, uh sorry, they include a primary man connection to the nearest point within the network. They do not include the redundant connections. Administration is also recommending the removal of service credit union place fitness expansion. The service place project charter is based on two thousand and sixteen conceptual drawings and costing. And while escalation increases have been factored in due to the evolution of usage patterns at Service Place Fitness Center and planning around the community amenity sites, the charter is being recommended for removal. If there is a desire for a project charter to be in the corporate plan, a new charter is recommended to be developed, which will reevaluate the specific needs and project costs. So in conclusion, administration is recommending that one new growth uh charter be added and one be removed. And if council have any additional recommendations for amendments, we are asking that they be submitted through the council website as a postponed motion by April nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Administration will then provide backgrounders for any amendments and provide them to council so that they can be deliberated at the May seventh uh May seventh. Thank you. So that concludes my presentation and we're happy to answer any questions.
So just um related to the take it or leave it. So you just want me to put it forward as a motion for that?
Yes, please.
Okay, that's fine. And then we'll be debating those.
May seventh, prior just prior to
Yeah, I'll just look for whatever that is and Thank you.
With that, councillor Broadhead and then councillor Kelly.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair. Uh Recreation zero four nine, neighborhood park development. What what's what's actually in that project chart?
Sorry, I didn't hear if anyone turned it over to me. Um so I'll just uh through the charity councillor Broadhead, though in the new neighborhood charter, that is where all of the planning um money for all of our existing new parks. So as we build out new parks, um we do the concept plans, the detailed design, and then also the funding for capital construction lives within that charter. So um you would have seen Jennifer Park build out the last couple of years, the park in Aberton. Those are the parks that we build out of that new neighborhood charter. And it just kind of gets updated every year with the information we have from developers on their current state um and as we build out the concept plans accordingly.
Fair enough. Maybe I should have given you some context for my question. So uh the uh when it comes time to replace an existing park. Is that in the R M R project uh envelope, if you will?
Yeah, through the charity council Broadhead, great question. Um yes, so when we redevelop park space that comes through R M R, so that would be through our outdoor recreation um infrastructure um charter that we put forward is R M R. Um and so right now we are, we do individual amenities through replacement. One thing we are looking at is a bit more of a holistic approach of of investigating as we move forward of park redevelopment in communities. Um we haven't really tackled that yet, but that is something that we're investigating as we move forward. For right now, individual amenities are replaced through the R M R cycle, not through the growth.
Okay, well, fair enough. Uh I'll be looking to submit an information request on what it would cost and in terms of addition to the R M R project to replace existing parks with fully accessible parks when they're replaced. So I suspect you've dealt with the question before. That was my question here, whether it was included there or not. And then whatever happens to it after, we'll see. Well, I'll counsel.
Okay, councillor Kelly.
Uh thanks. I'm Madam Chair. I have a question around the um fiber network buildout. Totally, absolutely, one hundred percent supported. But my question is um based around the they putting it all in one lump sum of uh one point four million in twenty twenty five. Is is that actually a a realistic doable amount to achieve in twenty twenty five or should it be spread over two years as many projects are? Uh you know, break it in half over twenty break it in half over twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. To, to better smooth out the, the budgeting process.
Go ahead, Joanne.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the question, councillor Kellogg. So with respect to how much can actually be implemented in twenty twenty five, that does remain to be seen. Uh, much of it, uh, is going to be tied to decisions regarding the northeast servicing uh, to, so that we can take advantages of synergies between those two projects. So in light of the number of unknowns at this point in time, the, it was the choice of administration to put it into twenty twenty five so that the funds would be available as we need it and as projects progress.
Thank you. Um, dark zero zero three civic plaza. I thought we hunted that.
Something that we, um, were going to bring forward to remove, but we wanted to make sure millennium, the status of millennium was considered before we recommended a removal of that.
I, I just thought we had already eliminated that in a previous exercise. But, okay.
I was just something that was in my pits. I apologize for that. So in, in relation to the service zero zero eight and the re, um, removal of that. I mean, but, I mean, we're tying it into the community amenities site plan kind of idea. Is that, is that kind of what's happening? I'm looking at Dan and.
That's one of the factors, but yeah, what would be the other factors that?
I think Danielle is online and can.
Drowning.
Yeah, I, um, thanks councillor Mackay for the question. So really it's about, um, now that we have a plan for con, the concept plan for the community site. It's that we need to really further understand what we need to do at service place in the future and the future planning for that facility. So our next step would be in twenty twenty six would be to consider a brief for that, um, that facility to look at it and say, what would the next iteration of service place look like now that we have a concept plan to work forward on community amenities? Um, the update of the fitness center is really the last remaining from what was envisioned as a plan for the future in twenty ten and updated in twenty sixteen. And we're just wanting to affirm that what the work we need to do there is actually what we should be doing. Um, because things have changed a lot in the context and the framework for the recreation horizon in St. Albert's.
So I mean, it would be, idea would be, even though it's coming off as part of the service zero zero eight, it could come back on as another project charter request. I just want to make sure.
Correct.
Just said, because I mean, I think one of the biggest part of the fitness expansion, other than the floor space, but was the actual, the change rooms and, and, and the like in there. So.
Correct.
I just don't see how they're changing that need, so.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think there's probably some needs still there. However, we'd like to take a holistic look at the facility and make sure that we're making any revisions we need based on the current context. And so our plan would be to do a bit of an assessment of the facility in twenty twenty six. And then to your point, if this is still an outstanding need, then we would build that out into a future charter, um, for consideration of council.
Nope, that's good. Thanks.
My question was answered through councillor Mackay's.
I'll make the motion, you know.
I, I have one question, um, then we can go to you. So my question is with the municipal area network, um. I guess is, is the, I don't know who to look to. Is the tech changing? So is this something that's going to be obsolete in 10 years or are there alternatives that have, that have been considered?
That's definitely a joint.
Question, no.
Thank, thank you very much for the, for the question. So, um, to my knowledge, and I, and I, um, must confess that the, the, uh, the nitty gritty of fiber networks is not my personal, uh, background. But I can certainly get more information to you if required, but it is a very stable technology. And there are other alternatives, um, that we could consider. Um, commercial is, is certainly one. Um, cellular is certainly another, uh, commer, both of them have li- limitations in terms of their bandwidth and can over the lifetime of the network actually be significantly more, uh, uh, expensive for the city. So with this regard, the fiber technology is very stable. And, uh, the number of fibers that you're able to, uh, bundle together into conduits certainly is advancing as the technology is advancing, but the fundamentals of the technology are quite stable.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, we're going to go councillor Hughes and then councillor Mackay.
Okay, uh, the community's, um, amenities, say, construction, we have it pegged next year for twelve million dollars. Is that planning or are we actually, are we actually going to build something?
Uh, thanks for that question, councillor Hughes. We would, we would look to defer that probably until start of twenty six. Um, we are finishing the work this year and we're working on the, um, technical site, site studies as well as the partnership modeling. And then we'll be returning to council. So I don't think we'll actually probably, when we update the charters, we'll have that queue for twenty five, we'll have that queue for twenty six. And we'll keep aligning that as council is prepared to fund that. The twelve million dollars of its detailed design. And then the next phases are actually construction and we're just working all that through with the, um, I'm sure as Ms. Victor can share in terms of the debt modeling and all the other components. But right now we're just using it as a placeholder as we have more current information.
So, because we're not going to be putting, I was just thinking, let me use opportunity to put like the bike park or something like get started on something. But that the intention is not to do that until. And are we pushing back by two years? So it'll be like twenty twenty six and then twenty twenty eight, the start of the build then because of the design stuff?
So I think we have some other components to work through before we're prepared to put a firm date on it. But what we're looking at right now is deferring it to start twenty six and that would align to the new council as well. Um, but what we would look for is then what would that build out phase be like, um, when we're working with our colleagues in finance on the debt strategy?
As part of the annual budget process, each charter will be further reviewed for like movement in the process or refined estimates. So that's in addition to that annual process on top of this.
And overwhelm those guys when they come in on the first, welcome to this decision. That's it. Thank you.
Just something really quick. I just noticed that fire zero two three, fire station number two, security upgrade. There's no dollars or years assigned to that. It, there's just blank line. What is that a?
Well, that, that probably, I think when we sent up the tenure, I think it, it might have been approved.
Okay.
So sorry about that. It was, yeah, we were just sending out a draft of last year, so.
I just didn't want Everett to get too worried about the fact. That's something, but no money assigned to it there. Okay, so that one is coming off and it's not there or? I just think you're very efficient, Everett, to have, get it all done with no dollars. Congratulations.
Nice. One more question and then I'll be done, honestly. Um, so the total number is thirty four minus the twelve would be tw- twenty two million is in growth. Is, do we have that much money available in growth right now or how much do we actually have?
No, so, um, obviously again, some of these in twenty five would be, uh, debt funded projects. And they were sort of what we provided you was based on our, uh, twenty twenty four to twenty thirty two. So no, we don't have that much money. And so part of the process that'll come back in the fall is our recommendations or our prioritization and our recommendations for twenty twenty five. And again, given that girls charters are being now revamped and updated, some of these might be pushed on, but.
The average that we have available, Suzanne, I had earlier estimate it was about twelve million. So that would be without considering debt financing. And of course, give or take that we would defer some recommendations. So it's just a high level estimate.
We have approximately, I'm afraid half of the projects are listed here.
About that, considering that.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, I think we're ready to go. So councillor Kellogg, I'm, I'm looking to Marta. Um, I'm voting against the second motion. So would it be preferable just to do one motion at a time or?
Yes, maybe the first two separately and then.
And then just do the rest three. Okay. Does that work for you councillor?
Sure. Yep. Uh, that administration update the twenty twenty five slash twenty twenty, twenty thirty four municipal growth capital plan to include the project brief provided in the attached attachment titled growth capital plan additions.
Okay, so I'll call for the votes.
Wrong one, sorry.
Hey, we've got Mary here and that's. Two.
That administration update the twenty twenty five slash twenty thirty four municipal growth capital plan to remove the project provided in the attached title growth capital plan removals.
Any comments?
Uh, I think removing the proposed made sense in the background comments that, supporting comments of why. Uh, so I, I would support it.
Anyone else before I go? Uh, so I'm, I'm just voting against this because kind of to, to councillor Mackay's comments. Um, yes, the scope probably needs to be changed. The dollars are wrong, um, but keeping it as a placeholder that we do need to update it. We do need to, we do work in the facility. I think is, is important. Councillor Hughes.
Yeah, and I, actually I agree with, uh, councillor Jolly. I think that, that we already know the half of the site items aren't going to make the list, but if we don't have a placeholder, it gets lost forever. So I can see the value and actually just keeping it. Um, and if we need to update the numbers, you update the numbers when the time comes, but we kept many other items in here as placeholders before, just they don't get lost. And so I can see the value of just keeping it.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll call, call for the votes. Hey, that fails. Hey, and three, four, five together.
That council members be requested to submit any additional amendments to the twenty twenty five slash twenty thirty four municipal growth capital plan to administration by April nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Uh, item number four, that administration prepare backgrounders for proposed amendments to the twenty twenty five slash twenty thirty four municipal capital growth plan for presentation to council at the May seventh, twenty twenty four meeting for consideration of approval. And item number five, that the revised twenty twenty five slash twenty thirty four municipal capital growth plan be included in the proposed twenty twenty five slash twenty twenty seven budget along with funding recommendations guided by the capital prioritization matrix.
So I'll call for the vote. That carries. Great. Thank you, everybody.
Madam Chair, can I just a process question?
Yeah.
So if we remove, that we left that project charter for service place in, but the intent was to actually renew the project charter? Does that require some direction from council or you got it already?
You got it, yeah.
Uh, so no emergent items as far as I know. Uh, any information requests of, of motion? So Cheryl said no. Okay, uh, and can we get a motion to go in camera?
Okay, councillor.
The standing committee in the home move in camera for a discussion with administration regarding a land matter pursuant to sections twenty four, one A and twenty five with freedom of information and protection of privacy act.
Hey, I'll call for the votes. Serious, thank you.
Hang in there, Cassie. We're almost done.
Do we want, like, do we want a couple of minutes to set up?
If you don't mind, we could take.
Let's do five for Bill.
Like, why don't we just vote like we normally?
I know, like, they've been around.